Okay, thank you. We're here on Wednesday, November 8th, the day after Election Day. It's 7:00 and it's planning board time. So here we are.
Yes.
We go to our first matter and that is a public hearing for the Goran Nikic Brandywine subdivisions, lots 5, 6, 7, and 8. I guess we're going to take these all together because we've been looking at them together and we'll go from there. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else that we have to do?
Just to clarify, this is a continuation of the public hearing from our last session.
Oh, we already had it last time. Oh, okay.
David Sessions with Kellard Sessions Consulting. As Chairman said, we were here last time at a public hearing. The hearing was left open. We're hoping to close the hearing tonight and review the draft resolution, which we've received a copy. We received, the last memos we received was from Bob Cioli, from Sabrina, and from Steve Coleman. We've addressed, I think, the majority, if not all, of the comments with our latest submission. We have a, just a recent, the only recent memo we have is from Steve Coleman, who pretty much outlined his original comments or latest comments and how we've addressed them and obviously Steve can speak with that, to that. But I think we're in pretty good shape. We have not received anything from Bob Cioli, nor have we received anything from Sabrina based on the last submission. So I think, hopefully, that indicates that we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Well, that means they were put in the resolution.
Yeah, they're, exactly.
Right, those things that are conditioned.
That is correct.
Right, right. And again, those issues that you have indicated before, now that we're moving forward on those, you're okay with those, having those conditions in the resolution?
That is correct.
Okay.
So we've had an opportunity to review the resolution. It looks in order. The remaining comments are legitimate. We've, we've seen them, we've read them, and we understand them and we understand the timelines.
Okay. Steve, do you want to run through your comments? Because I think yours was the only response that we had in our package.
The Environmental Board at their October meeting did review, you know, the latest revised plans for all four lots. And the primary comment that they've had all along is, you know, the applicant has indicated that they would not, you know, build any other accessory type structures. And so the Environmental Board was concerned that whether, you know, if that's the case, whether the planning board would want to retain site plan jurisdiction, you know, for these lots for any other accessory structures or let it just fall under the normal, you know, zoning and building, you know, code requirements.
Did ERB have any sense that there was something special, environmentally special here that needed to be protected? Were there any special concerns that they had that would lead us to want to make sure we had, we retained jurisdiction?
The primary concern was just dealing with steep slopes. They felt that it was a steep slope site and that, you know, they weren't certain that in each lot, you know, on a lot per lot basis, whether there was really sufficient space for, you know, putting a pool or, you know, tennis court potentially or other structure. And their concern was that they didn't want the applicant buying a piece of property thinking that, you know, that would be feasible without, you know, having some information up front.
Or the purchaser from the applicant. So this is something that we would put as a condition, would run with the land, so to speak. And have we done this before?
Yeah, I mean, so there's a couple of different ways. You can retain jurisdiction so that, you know, if someone proposes a pool or any type of accessory structure in the future, they would have to come back to you for a site plan amendment for that pool or accessory structure. And I think when we're talking about a accessory structure, we're not talking about the kind of, you know, like prefab sheds that you don't even need a building permit for.
Could be a chicken barn.
Right. Chicken coop. So we could do it through you retaining jurisdiction. We could also request a deed restriction, that there shall be no accessory structures. That would be the, you know, on the extreme end, yeah.
Well, you mentioned sheds. You can have, they're all usually prefab. I agree with that totally. Some are small, some are modest, and some almost look like a garage.
Right. Yeah, there's a, there's a square footage limitation. I think it's 120 square feet where you don't even need a building permit for that.
That's true.
So that's something that I presume this board wouldn't want to see.
That's new. That's from 25 years ago.
Two, by the way.
About there.
With interest.
The reality is that, you might recall that as part of the subdivision process, we, we did show pools, we showed an expanded disturbance area with associated tree removal, steep slope disturbance associated with that larger disturbance envelope. We've pulled it back because my client is not going to build that. But the environmental review and the plans still show those trees that would be removed had that larger envelope actually come into play. So the, the environmental review talks about the slopes associated with it, the trees that would be removed even though we are disturbing less. And I'm not trying to talk the board in or out of anything, but just, just wanted to remind you that of that.
But I think one of the points would be that this would be something obviously subsequent to, to your client and he's going to sell these. So it would be, I think, later on when perhaps we've had some stabilization of the slopes and now we have new construction being introduced to these slopes, tearing up the lawns and whatever, maybe cutting down additional trees at that future point. So I, my personal belief is I think a restrictive deed would be, restrictive covenant that would be put into deed would be a little bit too harsh, but I think the ability to have a look at it later on probably makes sense because these are extreme slopes, as we all know.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. In concept, the, I'm just thinking-
But not practice.
No, no. Generally, in practice, but I'm still looking at, you know, thinking about small accessory buildings. And I would say that, that there should, you know, there'd be no future development without coming back to us for any accessory structures or other construction unless there was no impact on any steep slopes. So if you could figure out how to do it-
Drop it in with a drone, that's about it, right? Drop it in by air. I mean, otherwise you're going to be impacting those slopes. I mean, just to, just to get a vehicle in there to bring something in, to put a pad down or-
But are you, are you talking about disturbance to steep slopes that are actually beyond the extreme limit that we've shown? In other words, there's two disturbance, there's really not two disturbance limits. We, we show a construction limit which is associated with what my client is going to build.
Right.
We also show a, I, forgive me, I forget what we actually called it, but the line that mimicked the old subdivision, which is a greater disturbance area. Are you suggesting that if a future owner wants to disturb beyond what my client wants to disturb now, but it's within the subdivision disturbance, it would be prohibited? Because I think that would be probably too restrictive. I'm thinking if you go beyond the subdivision disturbance, that's a different story.
Is the bigger line the clearing and grading line?
No.
No, it's the original clearing and grading line.
Correct.
It's not the current one.
Correct.
Sorry. There's clearing and grading, but then there's also the sub, the matter of the slopes. I mean, the clearing, grading limit line doesn't necessarily correspond with steep slope designations.
Sure.
So there may be, I'm not suggesting we do this necessarily, but if you were to draw that line, it might be more restrictive on the property and maybe appropriately so because those are the things that we worry about. One might be required to come back if they want to get into a steep slope to do that, to do something, whatever it might be.
I'm not even suggesting that the people don't have to come back if they go beyond my client's line. They can come back, that, that's fine. I, I thought that I heard if they propose disturbance beyond what my client is proposing, it would be prohibited. That's just, that's what I was trying to prevent.
I don't think it would be prohibited. It would be something where they would be required to come back, I think.
Yeah, if there were-
That's fine.
What I was saying, or trying to say, was that if there is any disturbance to steep slopes for any accessory construction, that would have to come back to us.
That's absolutely fine, so-
There's no, sorry. Say there's no disturbance to steep slopes, but they have to take out a bunch of trees.
Well, that requires a permit.
I mean, since there are so many permutations here, wouldn't it just be simpler to say, we retain jurisdiction and they come back?
Right. I think that'd be the cleanest way to go.
And it could be very simple.
It's going to be difficult for us to understand.
And you know what? You could also add in, you know, that you're retaining jurisdiction unless otherwise waived by the board at that time. So if they come before you and-
It's de minimis.
And the consensus of the board is, yeah, that this is, this is de minimis, there's no impacts, at that point you can waive jurisdiction and you won't have to go through the whole process.
But there's a conflict that you mentioned before, potentially, that you don't have to come before anybody if your shed's less than 120 square foot. Now this would seem to now bring that back in because it's any accessory structure.
Or you could say any accessory structure greater than 120 square feet.
Okay.
To come back to you.
Consistent with the reg that we have now, that's great.
Which it would be.
Does the 120 feet only apply to sheds?
I think it's just a structure.
Like if you build, let's say you, let's say you build a kid's clubhouse, you know, two by four construction, you build a kid's clubhouse, that's 150 feet.
Square feet.
Square feet. They're coming back here?
Yeah.
That's different.
If it's a structure-
But then if you build it, it's only 100 feet, do they have to come back here?
There's another, there's another issue.
Okay.
I believe a lot of those pieces of equipment are considered temporary structures, correct?
I thought in the past, I'm, just want to, for my own clarification, would it be easier just to say if there's any environmental impacts?
Any activity.
Steep slopes, wetlands, clearing and grading? But you should differentiate between the limits of disturbance that you're talking about, which you feel should not be the clearing and grading to come back to the planning board, the overall one that was on the original plan? I just need clarification on that.
See, I would not go along with the, the overall larger one because that's not what we looked at.
You want to have it to confine one.
This application, exactly, the refined ones, the new ones that the client is now-
And that will be the new clearing and grading.
Correct.
So if you're going into the new clearing and grading, you have steep slopes, impacts, trees, wetlands, then you have to come back?
I would, and I would say not by structure-
That's only 100 above 120 square feet.
I would say any activity.
Sorry?
But that's the case regardless of what you put in your resolution, if they're impacting slopes, wetlands.
Yeah, that's what we look at when they come in, I'll look at that. And if it's over those, we send them back to the planning board.
They have to come back no matter what you say in your resolution right now.
So it's already in place? And that's, and that's for a structure that's more than 120 square feet? Anything under than that doesn't pass before?
That meets the thresholds in the code.
We may have to put that in to make that clear because-
I thought it's already in the code.
No, I think it says any activity in the code. So literally if you're coming in, no structure, if you just want to regrade for some reason, you want to regrade the slope, that's, that's an activity and that has to be approved.
And the regrading has to be a certain amount of square feet, right? Within the certain slope gradient.
So we're saying the protections are already there?
Do you want to make it trip the wires for the steep slopes categories or any steep slope? If you're disturbing 10 square feet, you have to clarify that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If it meets the threshold in the code, they're coming back to you anyway. If you want to regulate something below the threshold in the code, and I don't know off the top of my head what the square footages are-
For each, for each category?
For each category.
It's one tenth for the lowest, I'm sorry, one tenth for the steepest, extremely, two tenths, and then it's from 13060, 8700 to 4720, those areas of categories. But if you want to be even, have more restrictions, you have to state that in the resolution.
Okay, I see. That makes sense then, okay.
If you want to go further than what the code-
Right.
It's up to you to decide that.
I understand, okay. So that's, that's the issue, if we want to do something more than what's already in the codes now, that, that would be triggered anyway.
What do we do in subdivisions where things come back to us? What is it in certain subdivisions where we've retained jurisdiction for any activity? How, how does that come about?
Again, those are the three environmental impacts-
But there are subdivisions where things come back, a pool comes back to us.
It comes back, conservation subdivisions because of the-
Okay, is this a conservation subdivision?
Yes, it was.
It can come back too.
So it comes back to us then?
Because of the areas you put in, remember you put in the 110 and the 115? A lot come back because of that.
Mm-hmm.
Where it doesn't even impact any environmentals.
Right, that's right.
So are we protected?
Or the clearing and grading, so you have five categories. Those are the five categories I look at all the time.
So that's, that's right, I forgot that this was a conservation subdivision.
Because we should retain jurisdiction.
Just leave it. It's up to you if you want to make it more restrictive. But you'd have to put it in the resolution so we know.
Right, right. So it's triggered.
Conservation, I don't know.
So staff would know?
Yep.
When we review it.
Okay. Well, personally, I think that, you know, given the long history of this application, given the, the nature of the slopes out here, which are pretty extreme in many, many cases, that it would be appropriate to, to retain jurisdiction. And I don't know what, what we want to get down to. I mean, you know, someone's going to put a slate slab down somewhere, we're going to all sit here and have a hearing over it, but I don't know. What do you guys think in terms of what the size is or what should be triggered? Again, maybe it's on a over 35 degree slope, maybe it's anything, and maybe if it's the under 15 degree, it's a little bit more.
Well, if it's under 15, then it's not a slope.
Good point.
So that wouldn't trigger that one.
So what, Bob, what are the numbers again for slopes?
15 to 25 is one tenth?
One, no.
Excuse me, three tenths, which is about 13,068 square feet. And the middle category is 25 to 35, which is two tenths, which is about 8750. And then you got the extremely steep slopes, which is 35 and greater, which is 4750. Those are the categories I look at, which sends things back to the planning board.
4750?
Square feet.
Square feet. And 4750 is 200 by 200?
No.
No, that's an acre. So it's 200 by 10?
For instance, yeah.
400 by 10. Anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty sizable area-
It is.
-for the steep slopes that are in this. So maybe we ought to consider reducing those, I think.
Yeah, I think so. Did ERB have any specific recommendations?
Our thought was to have you retain site plan jurisdiction for any proposed disturbance or any accessory use.
Regardless of the areas of the steep slopes.
That way it would be picked up and, you know, evaluated based on the, you know, potential impacts, you know, to slope and trees and potentially wetland.
We appreciate their giving us more workload.
More applications will be coming back.
But like I said, you could say unless otherwise waived by the board at that time.
Right, well, I think that's critical.
We have to have that at least, you know, that we can-
And we would take the recommendation of staff on, on that, of course.
At least 99 times out of 100. With no, with no modification, we'll take it then.
That's a good percentage.
Yes.
Okay, does that make sense?
I think.
And again, or just to be sure that we're, we're dealing with the, the current clearing and grading limit disturbance lines that we're seeing with this application.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
This application revises those as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I've been-
In fact, the old ones are now irrelevant.
Yeah, I think they are.
Now that means, Jennifer, we have to get new amended declaration agreements as well if they're going to stick to the newer ones.
For the amended clearing and grading limit line, right? And that's in the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, a question for clarification, given what Mr. Sessions said about the original pool and whatever, pool house. When we sign, when our, Gus Chairman gets to sign the plat, I assume that there will be no pool on that plat?
Yes.
On the plat? The plat is already filed.
Yeah, we're not signing the plat again.
There's no plat right now.
What is it that we sign then? The plan?
The site plan.
The site plan.
That's been presented to you, right? The plat was filed.
There, we would not expect to see-
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
And that's not what he's building.
Yes, right. We understood that.
He's been very clear, yep, thank you.
But we don't want to have expectations from a buyer. Oh, look, it's here.
And there should probably be a note on the plan to the, referencing this conversation that we just, that we had, that there shall be no accessory structure. You know, the, the, the planning board, sorry, the planning board is retaining jurisdiction, site plan jurisdiction over future accessory structures unless otherwise waived.
How do we design something so that that cautionary information is provided to buyers, subsequent buyers?
The, the best way is through something recorded in the county clerk's office, basically a deed restriction.
Well, I think it's a conservation development, I think it would be prudent to do that in this case.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't want to complicate things, but-
Better now than later.
Yeah, yep. If, if a future homeowner decides to come in and propose an accessory structure that's 160 square feet or above, but it's within your approved disturbance limit line, we're not talking about coming back to the planning board?
I think we are.
Unless staff would review it and decide that it's de minimis and that it doesn't need to come back to the planning board, you would make that recommendation to the planning board.
Well, there is, there is a section under 6440 which tried to streamline conservation subdivision years ago, where if someone is put in a structure and it doesn't impact the steep slopes, clearing and grading, wetlands, trees, or any other items that you put as restrictions, including the 110 and the 115, the bill and inspector could issue a permit on that. There is a specific clause in 6440.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that the building inspector and staff will look at that and, or the professional that's preparing the plan will look at it and make sure that that structure doesn't trip any coverage, you know, limitations.
Right, those are the five things we look at. And if none of those five things are exceeded, then they could get a building permit from the bill and inspector.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's what I was trying to get at with the accessory thing on it. If there is a flat piece of land somewhere on the site.
Sure, makes sense. Okay. Steve, were there other, other things you want to cover?
No, I think everything else other than, you know, just the follow-up with the maintenance bond and, you know, details.
Costs and those kinds of things.
Cost is the only one I could think of. Okay.
There was one change to the resolution that I think you have-
Circulated.
Yeah. And that was just to add a condition regarding the HOA. The Brandywine Homeowners Association South, Inc. has been created. It was created several years ago, but the town doesn't have a copy of the offering plan. There have been a number of, you know, easements, declarations, restrictive covenants filed against the property regarding obligations, maintenance obligations for the common driveway and the stormwater facilities, but we just want to, you know, have proof that the homeowners' association has that duty to maintain the common driveway and the stormwater management and that a copy of the offering plan is provided.
Right, we've talked about them many times throughout this, this application.
Yeah.
Good.
Time is almost perfect.
All right. Anything else from anyone?
I had a couple of things on the resolution.
Sure.
On page 12, there's a, on line 8 and on line 46, I think there's a deputy that should be taken out.
Ah, the deputy.
And then on page 13-
I don't know.
-line 16 point S. Do we want to say anything about limitations on color temperature for the LED lighting? And should we just sort of make that boilerplate along with the other stipulations?
And we're doing what, 2,700 Kelvin?
Yeah.
Not, not to exceed?
Where was the range?
Will you say not to exceed 2,700?
Sure, sounds reasonable.
That works for me, good, that's a good comment. But I don't understand the deputy. Why would you take-
Because our, our town engineer is now the town engineer.
Oh, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
He deputized.
I try to keep it low key.
On page 12.
I like that.
Congratulations.
Line 8 and line 46.
I didn't notice that on the memo.
Great. That's wonderful. But I like what the Chairman just said, you've been de-deputized.
And I'd have a question on page 9. It's just a question. Line 43, when we visit the site, do we typically put the date in as a record or, no?
No.
Okay, just asking.
Anyone else, anything?
No.
Okay, anything from the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Nothing.
Jennifer, all set then? Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as revised?
Close the public hearing first. And if there's-
Oh, wait, that's right. Is there a comment from the public on this application? Okay. Not seeing any? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as revised?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, all set?
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Thank you for dropping by.
Please replace our easel.
All right.
Okay, we move to our next item. This is the continued public hearing on 91 Bedford Road LLC. This is an application for a site development plan, wetlands permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 91 Bedford Road.
Hi, Bill Spade, architect. I have a flash drive with pictures on it that I would love to put up there.
Sure.
The last time that didn't work.
Sabrina's come just in time. Yeah, right.
Yeah, thank you for waiting.
Our audiovisual club member has arrived.
Sorry for my delay.
It's okay, we stalled.
Specifically for you.
I think Bill's pretty good at this, though.
You know, this is the thing that worries me the most about these meetings.
We're getting new technology, it's on the horizon.
You don't have to learn this one. Sabrina said, you know, we're getting new technology, so the next time you come back.
I don't know if it's the next time he comes back.
Sunday.
It was mentioned today, so it's, it's closer than it was before.
It's changing. At least it was mentioned.
No, I, I actually, I've requested that we have technology like we have in the room next door, so it's all wireless.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Bluetooth.
What?
Bluetooth.
Yeah. We're going to have to get you new pointers, though. We're gonna have to get you new pointers, though. They're not that bad. Not on Amazon.
You don't think so?
I still have to go to the bathroom. I was in with the downboard.
What the heck with that? Oh, boy.
That's a new one. Try it again.
I'll try one more file. Well, I don't know why. This is a file I got from Michael.
It should.
Michael.
I don't know.
Why don't you try going into Adobe Reader and opening it from within Adobe Reader? So, close out of there, and then go to Acrobat Reader.
Go to my computer, maybe?
Yeah.
Flash drive.
What?
Bedford, that's not the one I wanted, I wanted the next one.
Go to browse.
Browse. Oh, sorry, thank you.
Come on, open, open, come on, come on.
So close.
That's crazy.
Okay, so we're not gonna, we're just drawing. All right, I have one drawing at least we can look at.
Okay.
Again, here, let me pass that out. This is also.
Are these different than the ones we had in our packets?
Yes, there's a revision to it, which was why I brought it to give it to you.
The staff seen it?
No.
Thank you.
Revision is part of what we were gonna cover anyhow, but I have four more copies.
We can share.
Yeah, we could.
Yes, give one to Steve.
I can share with them.
Are there members of the public who are interested in seeing this? Perhaps you can share.
So that, boy, my apologies for.
We don't know if it's you or us, we can't, you know, we shouldn't take the whole responsibility.
Can you sort of direct us to where these trees are located on this plan?
Sure. So back up for a second. The, what I was planning to do was go through what we submitted architecturally for the prior submission. Part of that was an AC enclosure we're proposing around the condenser units that would be on each of the balconies of the residential units, and you all have that material, so I don't know if going through those.
And you described it in your memo, too, so.
Yeah. So, there was that. This plan shows, and again, so I'll quickly go over this cover letter for our last submission. This plan shows a change we made on the landbank parking spaces and the handicap parking spaces to indicate there are four parallel spaces that are landbanked along that north property line, and there are a total of three handicap spaces in the total plan. We had site lighting, items we had submitted, we talked about the dumpster schedule, the site lighting schedule for operations, so you know, if you need me to go over any of those things, let me know.
Can we talk about the site lighting? Can you just outline the, what we have in terms of what your lighting is, the timing, et cetera?
Yes, sure. So the big thing was there's a plan submitted, Michael Campbell's plan, that shows those light fixture types. I think it was to clarify that the parking lot fixture is similar to the ones that we find around town. It's a square fixture that, you know, only points downs, fully shielded, so night sky rated, and that's the fixture that we're using.
It's okay.
And I think there are, did I say even how many of them here? I would have helped myself to say the total number. I think there are seven around the back of the parking lot. I could be wrong about that, but something like that, they're shown on the plan. The light, there are so, obviously would be light fixtures mounted to the building at the door entrances, and there are light fixtures on each balcony.
Going back on the parking lot, so they're gonna be set up to turn on at dusk and then turn off at ten o'clock.
Correct, correct. And then the, you know, the concept of, all right, what if somebody drives in and parks in the lot at nighttime after lights are off? Each of the entrances would have lights that would be on twenty-four hours or as needed at nighttime, so they would still be able to get to the entrance doors. There's one on the rear and one on the front. I'll also point out that we do have the parking garage underneath that would have lighting, you know, in the ceiling of that parking garage. We haven't gotten to defining that yet, I just will say that we will make sure that that lighting is, you know, as low level as can be achieved, particularly at nighttime. So obviously, we don't want and you wouldn't want this glowing parking garage under the building, that would certainly defeat the purpose of.
Your text indicates that that will be motion operated as well.
Yes, right, right.
In the garage.
Yes.
So it seems to be. You'll have some sort of ambient light all the time, probably, right?
Yes, at the entrances, again, you know, there's a lobby.
And then the garage is something.
There's security lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, the plans indicate the security lighting, that the lighting in the garage would be on a timer and timed. And what Bill is telling you about the outdoor lighting, that it would shut out, but there will always be security lighting to, you know, at the doorways, what is required for safety.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I guess we would just want to make sure that those fixtures are recessed so that, again, they don't protrude and shine outside.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. I have, as a budding neighbor, I have great interest in making sure that achieves the same goal.
The specifications and the details in the plans that talk about the shielding and ensure.
In the garage as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, right. We referenced the dumpster schedule.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that.
Yeah.
If you're gonna have a cafe or some sort of food place.
Yes.
Is once a week sufficient?
That's possibly not, you might be correct. So, were it to be twice a week or three times a week, it would still be the same schedule, seven AM to ten PM, weekdays for that service.
Right.
I think the key was that any of the dumpster service would be, you know, not during overnight hours.
Right.
And that is not the case right now for several of the commercial operations in that neighborhood, and we would love to see that changed.
Are the others earlier or later?
No, it's later.
After ten o'clock at night?
Three AM.
Yeah.
I see that, yeah, I don't know if that's after or before.
Yeah, it might be before ten PM.
There's no restrictions, and, you know, and depending on the pleasure of the board, you may want to restrict that further. You know, ten PM is late for garbage removal, for making that kind of noise, so you may want to put a further restriction and, you know, have it no later than seven PM, you know, from seven AM to seven PM.
Okay.
I know you mentioned about there could be a restaurant, but even with all the residents, once a week to pick up all that trash seems like you're holding a lot of garbage in the, on-site.
All right.
You don't want to consider it twice a week.
Yeah.
Food for thought.
That's fine. I think your concern would be just the hours and that it's weekdays in those hours as opposed to whether it's two or three times per week or.
I'm just concerned if you're doing it once a week, you're holding a lot of garbage on-site, which opens the door for things to come to get into garbage.
Sure, yeah, yeah. We would not, you know, speaking for the owner, they would not want to hold back on the garbage service. I think the idea was to make it a minimal amount so that it's not this ongoing disturbance.
Well, you do with that is you have smaller dumpsters, so they have to come.
They have, that's a good point, yeah.
There's this other technology that is, just a bit of an aggression here, but it is interesting for the town in general. There's a southern technology that I know of that a friend of mine's son has developed, which is there is a sensor put inside the dumpster, and there's no regular pickup. It's just when the dumpster gets to a certain level, it sends the message to the hauler to come and empty the dumpster.
Time to pick it up, okay.
And it's better for the owner or the renter of the dumpster because he's only paying for the service he needs rather than service he doesn't need.
That's interesting, yeah.
And it prevents the thing from overflowing, so you might look into that.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Sounds like something that would have started in Europe somehow.
No, it started in San Francisco with a friend of mine, he's like one of these, like, entrepreneur guys.
Right.
Is that still part of America, though?
There's a wall.
A wall in its future, that's okay.
If things keep up, I might move there.
Quickly, just go over a couple of things, and then we'll get into that, the tree part of it.
So we agree, though, that on the dumpster, we will either have technology or see it, use smaller ones, I'd say twice a week should be something that will condition.
We could say three times.
And I don't want the timing.
You know, we should, you should put in language that reflects the fact that you want as minimal trips as possible, but you don't want to create a, an overflow situation or a situation that is conducive to pests or something like that.
Sure.
That's well put, and then we could probably just say, and.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed three times.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and again, and the hours, I mean, we're, right now it's proposed at ten PM, what's a reasonable time?
Nine PM.
I like the seven, I thought seven was.
Seven PM?
Decent time.
This is, I'm getting a little concerned about how we're now trying to monitor the amount of garbage in these containers, and maybe, maybe it's appropriate to come four times a week if it's overflowing, we just don't know how much garbage is gonna end up here. So I'm not sure that it's within the logical purview of this board to be getting this deep into this particular subject.
Yep, yeah.
There is a standard operating procedure for, I think it's appropriate to limit the hours in which this is done because of the fact that it's in a residential neighborhood and it will disturb the neighbors, but to try and say no more than three times a week and no fewer than one time, it's just getting a little bit beyond our pay grade.
That's so easily, so easily done, though. It's a low hurdle.
You could, so the language could be as frequently as necessary to maintain.
You don't even need to talk about it.
Sanitary conditions.
Just that the dumpsters will be serviced. The garbage pickup is only allowed Monday through Friday between the hours of seven AM and seven PM.
Well, we're done with it.
That's fine.
Whatever you agree.
But if your, your son's friends, the device is used and it goes off on Saturday morning, then they may want to come on Sunday or late Saturday to pick it up, so.
There's gonna be trucks coming from San Francisco anyways.
You know, I don't, I don't think until the technology is widely spread, I don't think we should rely on the technology.
It's probably a driverless truck, too.
Wireless trucks, yeah, I got problems with that.
We'll have to wait for these imported products to hit on.
Have a drone take the garbage out. We don't have enough painted lines.
Okay. Got that.
That was easy.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm glad we have the Porsche went out of the way.
A quick thing, we had a section about the town comprehensive plan, and items are including the plan, street lamps, particularly with decorative, maybe baskets hanging from them, planters, you know, we have the planter along the Bedford Road, benches, trash receptacles, these are all identified on the site plan, bicycle parking, and then the special paving. Retail signage, we had, I was gonna show you pictures, we submitted, you wanted to get details on what the retail signage looks like, I don't know if you've got that at hand.
Greg, I think you were talking about that last time, were you satisfied with what you saw of the signs?
Just the thing is, I don't think I had a set.
Here, I've got it.
Steve, did you get this, by the way, this memo?
I got signage here.
I had a question about the signage.
Yeah.
I don't recall seeing any lighting shown for the signs. It said wooden signs, but a.
Correct.
Are you planning to not light the signs?
No, not, not from, not the ones on the building.
Yeah.
What about the gateway?
The entrance sign, we would.
And how would you light the entrance sign?
You know, a low-scale, ground-level light up to the sign.
Well, would it be better for the light to go down as opposed to project up? You know, Greg?
Which is fine, too.
Right.
I think less visually, you know, impactful if it's on the ground.
Is it?
Plantings around it, so it's screening the fixture.
The fixtures, and then they're directed, they don't just shine up, they're directed to the sign, so all the light is.
Right.
But it's, I think you would then lower the power a bit.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
Right, right. Again, you know, we would concur with the goal of keeping the lighting levels as low as necessary to sort of do the job and not.
I think, I think that's something that the, you put on a list for the building inspector and everything.
The, the sign, the signs will need to be approved by the architectural review board, so if you have certain overall comments from your board that you would like the architectural review board to follow per your resolution, I think it's important to incorporate it, but they are the entity that's responsible for sign permitting.
The only thing that Greg just brought up that I noticed also is that the sign that says cafe is a generic sign, and if that sign's gonna work, the name of the cafe can have no more than four or five letters in it.
Yes, right.
So that means that, because it fits quite handsomely within the architecture, but anything bigger than that is not gonna fit.
Yeah, right.
So we would pass that comment on to the architectural review board to be sure that they're looking at what the maybe more logical solution to this might be, just in anticipation that you're gonna have.
Right, right, yeah, and of course, those words are generic, there might be the opportu, you know, the code allows, by the way, on a commercial use, the whole length of the commercial use can't have signage on it.
So, but that's fine, but I think that the architectural review board also gets a chance to look at that.
Yeah, right, sure.
They do, but they follow what's in the code, so if you are looking for more specificity or restrictions than what's allowed in the code, now's the time to discuss that.
I would not.
Okay.
I agree.
This applicant has a right to have signs like everybody else in town, and I leave it up, I would leave it up to the ARB.
The board agree?
Well, two of us are in agreement.
I agree, I have no problem with that, I'm sorry.
I think from an architectural perspective, the goal would be that canopy-mounted, roof-mounted signage is limited, it's elegant, it looks good with the building. Back on the back wall of the storefront, there can be more signage there to identify the particular user, you know, over the doors of the cafe, they could have a longer sign, but, you know, that one in that gable is gonna limit it to a very, you know, specific word.
Okay, so I got it now.
Yeah.
So this is, so there would be actual tenant identification underneath the canopy along the storefront?
Along the storefront, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm thinking that this may be almost more building signage in the plane that you've brought out front, where you have Ninety-One Bedford and Cafe Cafe, that might be more the sign for the building and the tenant. What is the depth from, I guess your front porch is about ten feet deep, eighty deep?
Yes, yeah. What, yeah, that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the tenants are gonna want to slap it all over their storefront, and they're gonna have to deal with the depth of the overhang, and they're gonna have to lower it so you can see it from the street and figure out a way to light it, and I think we have to wait for tenants to submit signs and let the ARB deal with it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're kinda, there's nothing to respond to.
Yeah, you guys don't typically do this.
And it would be unfair to everybody if we tried to.
Right.
Sabrina, does the ARB also look at signs that might hang in windows as well as what?
Yeah, there's regulations on all of that.
Okay, so that's all.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, okay. Then, the next section, what we submitted, we're talking about particular budding residences. The first one we talked about, at least in the cover letter, was one fifteen Bedford, the immediate next door one, which is what this plan and letter is about. I'd like to hold that off for a second just to knock off the other ones that we did talk about, and then come back to that. The Campolongo residence, one thirty-seven Bedford, there's a question about the view from the second floor bedroom window, a photograph was taken out of that window, and we've indicated on that for the other photo montages, what the, right, what the outline of the building would be. Obviously, this is a full-leaf scenario, so you have the vegetation both between their property and one fifteen Bedford, and then the vegetation at one fifteen Bedford to Ninety-One that screens it, so from that view at least, there is no view of the building at all in full leaf. We don't have the benefit at the moment of being able to have a picture of, with no trees on it, but for the most part, the next-door house even then mostly screens the building anyhow, and it's very similar to the grade-level photograph that we submitted previously.
Yep.
We'd also talked about around the corner on Sixth Privote, Paul Forneby's property, I don't see Paul here. I met with Paul, he was concerned particularly about the retaining wall heights and the configuration there. I went through those with, with him, he was satisfied as to what we were proposing in terms of the landscaping in front of the retaining walls, that the retaining walls would be a stone material and therefore, you know, sort of recessive into the background behind the landscaping, and so, you know, ultimately was satisfied with, with what we were proposing. We then, so here, let's go into.
One fifteen?
One fifteen.
Actually, I have a few minor questions, which may be, I should just put out there before we get to one fifteen. The first is the, the status of the easement for the off-site drainage connection, how, is that.
That's done, that's signed.
Oh, it's done?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, okay. The second is, and I don't know where this gets earmarked in what we're doing, but there, I didn't see it in the resolution, maybe I missed it, about sprinklers in the attic, is that, is that recorded or memorialized someplace that there will be sprinkler, a sprinkler system in the attic in this building as per discussion with the fire department?
Yeah, no, it is actually, I'm not sure what the requirement is, but the building department covers the sprinklers, and there will be sprinklers whether or not they will be extended to the attic, I don't want to misrepresent, but they look at all of this detail, and it has to comply with current fire.
Well, I think this was the issue, is that sprinklers are not required in the attic, but because of the building, I don't know, you see hands raised, but just from previous discussions, I thought that there had been an agreement that there would be sprinklers in the attic, though the code might not require it, so. Do you want to come to the microphone?
Yeah, just to chime in while he's coming up, I remember that, and I had that in my notes, and I meant to revise the resolution to include that.
So I didn't know if it goes in the resolution or if it's memorialized some other way.
Joe Tavolacci, a principal, Ninety-One Bedford Road. We were speaking to the fire department in Chapacaw, and it's not required, but we wanted to put them in, just for protection for the tenants and our building.
Yep.
And so we're putting it in at our cost.
Above and beyond the requirement.
It could be conditioned in the resolution, then.
Yes, there's nothing prohibiting them from doing that.
Right.
Good.
Is this the first, I'm sorry, just a question here. Is this the first time we've gotten involved in, the planning board's gotten involved in building fire protection? I mean, it seems, if they're willing, if they're, if they're gonna, willing to do
I mean, it seems, if they're willing, if they're, if they're going to, willing to do it, I think.
They're offering to do it, yeah.
I think it's great, I mean, I'm not.
In the reverse situation.
I'm sorry. Can I, they're not, I, I don't think that Mr. Tavolacci is saying he's offering to do it for us. I think he's saying that he's going to do it for his own purposes. So if he's going to do it for his own purposes, I'm just not sure we should be involved in this. Just forgive me. I mean, I understand, I understand the desire to do it.
But I do think it came out of a discussion with the fight, with the Chapacqua Fire Department, but.
It's a fire department issue, then, I think.
No.
Right.
But then if it is a fire department issue.
It's not, it's a building department issue.
It should be memorialized someplace that it's being done.
But the fire department also, doesn't the fire department look, they look at site matters, right? You're right, it's a building department issue because it's fire code. And it's not, the building code is not part of our responsibility.
Correct.
Correct? So I'm just wondering if we're going past again, above our pay grade again, and the, the, he's already said that he's, forgive me, Mr. Tavolacci has already said he's going to do it anyway. Why are we involved in this?
Well, I think it's, it's not dissimilar to the other one we saw in Chapacqua last time around. We certainly can observe that the applicants are doing this. For example, I think last time we had that building downtown on South Greeley, and there was some issue about the fire department, and we had some discussion about it, but they satisfied the fire department. But I think it's, as a matter of public health and safety, I think we have for site plan, I think, just to check off the boxes. We also, for example, always want to make sure that the fire department has looked at it, that they've checked the turning radius, that they can get a truck in there, et cetera. So I don't know if it's something that we want to put in the resolution, but I think it's something that we can certainly check as part of our due diligence.
Well, what I would, my response to that would be just an observation that we have site plan authority. We don't have, we, which touches on fire trucks and so on and access and all that. And we don't, and I don't think that our authority goes to sprinklering a building. That's a completely different category, I think. Now, if the board wants to do it, it's okay with me. I just am not sure that, that we should be doing it. It seems to me we're just taking an extra step. The board's assuming an authority that we don't actually have, and that we have plenty of other people who are responsible to do that, who do it very well. That's my feeling.
Okay.
Legally, from the legal perspective, as long as there's a basis for the condition, and particularly where the applicant is agreeing to the condition, there's not, there's not a legal issue there.
There's not prohibition for putting it in.
We can put it in.
You can put it in, right. As long as, and I, I do recall, as Sheila mentioned, that the, the discussion from a prior meeting did stem from the letter from the fire department. I don't have the fire department letter here with me tonight, or my notes from that meeting, but I do recall that that's where.
Yeah, and the fire department said that they, what did the fire department say?
I don't have the letter with me tonight.
Not specifically, but what, I mean, not a word for word?
Well, if the fire department didn't ask for sprinklers, and then, given what Mr. Tavolacci said, I think the revision to the, the resolution should say that he volunteered to do this, and we graciously accept it.
However, since the applicant has volunteered to do it, if down the road the applicant changes his mind, for whatever reason, because the applicant's allowed to, then does that mean they're not approved because we have this in the resolution?
You can say unless, so that there, as offered by the applicant, sprinklers will be placed in the, in the attic of the proposed building unless the fire department and building department, say it's, it's okay for them not to. Obviously, worded more artfully.
You know, you need to make a decision as to whether or not this is a requirement you folks want to make, based on what the applicant has offered or not. Because if, if you, if he's saying he will do it because he wants to do it now based on conversations with the fire department and communications, that's one thing. If you're going to put it in your resolution and make it a condition that he must, then he has to, he can't change his mind. The building department is not going to disagree with the extra protection measures that, that a property owner wants to take. It's not within their purview to do that. So the fire department, I'm sure, would love, you know, the Cadillac of everything to make their jobs easier, but it's not necessarily required by fire code. So if you folks would like to embrace this because it was a discussion that arose via your site plan review, then you can condition it. Otherwise, you should not condition it, but that's completely your decision.
I just feel as though we're, I mean, this is one application for today, for tonight, there's an offer. But where do we go from here? Like, two months down the road, we say, oh, man, we think this building ought to be sprinkled, even though it doesn't have to be sprinkled.
Well, that's why I suggested, let's say that the applicant volunteered. That does not set a precedent in my mind that it's going to be required by us.
Well, then, then the applicant can un-volunteer. So what's the point of us making this condition to begin with?
If I recall correctly, I do think the basis of this started with a discussion with the fire department, that they thought it would be a good idea to do it, given the, the size of the building, the restrictions of the site. I think it grew out of discussions that took place.
To get the truck down the driveway.
That we weren't privy to, but that we were informed of during the course of our discussions. So I think there's more basis to it.
Than normal.
Than normal. And maybe it needs a little bit of research to find out if I'm accurately representing the, the basis of it, but.
I recollect the same thing. We were worried about the turning radius, and could they get the right vehicle in there in time? And if we had the sprinklers in the attic, then that would make the building safer, and the, the owner would be protected, the residents would be protected, the neighbors would be more protected. So I, I would say that I want it, you know, in, that would be my recommendation.
If we're working as, as an agent for the fire department in this case, which it sounds like we're doing, because they don't have the authority, they're looking, I would, I just think it would be good to have a letter from the fire department, since they're asking us to do this.
I'm looking for it.
Thank you.
The fire department never brought up sprinklers. We brought it up, because we thought it was important to sprinkle that attic. We brought it up. They, they never brought it up.
They never brought it up?
They never brought it up. We brought it up. And, and that's, that's how it came about.
I don't see why they would bring it up, because again, it's outside of their code. So they really can't impose it on an applicant. It's outside, everyone's code.
I mean, there, there's the offer, but the offer, if, I, I think it's wrong for us to assume the authority to require you to do it, and if you want to volunteer to do it, I think we'd be happy to have it happen, but you have the, you have the right to un-volunteer.
Okay, what was the other thing?
That's what I.
I mean, you go through the process.
I do have the right, but I'm not, I'm not going to.
That's fair enough, I understand that.
I mean.
But, but, but if you do have the right to un-volunteer, I don't know why we're putting it, because it has no, we have, it has no power, it has no effect.
It's not in your authority.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
And during the design process, do you guys change your mind? That's why we're, we're saying this.
Have we seen a building like this in, of this size, of this height, of this bulk recently in Chapacqua? I mean, maybe we're looking at a situation where we're anticipating what a new condition of the, of the code should be with regard to sprinklers.
Chapacqua Crossing has buildings of this size.
You did not require that. But you have space around, you have a lot of space to bring fire trucks around those buildings, whereas this is a very constrained site.
Well, I understand that, but I thought we just heard the fire department didn't.
Well, on October 30th.
If the, let me just finish. If the fire department thought that, if the fire department thought that there was not enough space to bring their trucks in, they wouldn't be approving the site plan to begin with. They wouldn't be saying, yeah, it's okay if you put sprinklers in the attic. Because they have no authority to require sprinklers in the attic. Apparently, they're okay with, unless I'm mistaken, they're signing off on.
So in their October 30th, 2016 communication to the town, to me, regarding this application, they summarized kind of their opinions. They said, there's a listing, there's a lot of discussion about accessing the building from the rear. They don't require the ability to turn around in the driveway, it would be acceptable to back out to the rear of the building. Ladder truck will reach the first three floors of the building in the front, and rear of the building will not be able to reach the peak of the roof based on the heights provided. Applicant has agreed to sprinkle the attic, which will be acceptable. They're not saying it is their requirement, but it is acceptable because they do not have equipment that will reach the peak of that roof in case of an emergency.
Okay, I thought that sprinklering was not.
It's not their requirement, but the applicant indicated to the fire department that they would sprinkle the attic.
So I would look at this as.
Of course, it's acceptable, but if, I'm sorry, if, if the applicant, I'm, I'm wondering if the applicant said he was going to sprinkle the roof, the fire department still approved the, the plans.
I'm sure they would.
It's implied, right?
Yeah.
But at the same token, I think it's, I think these sprinklers could be construed to be a mitigating factor to help offset the inadequacy of the, the equipment that the fire department is admitting that they have here.
Well, and the inadequacy of the turning spaces and everything else. And I think that we, excuse me, I think that, you know, we have a, a small issue here. This is, this is a discussion that I think is resolved by saying, acknowledging that the applicant volunteered, which doesn't, in my mind, set a precedence, correct, counselor?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that leaves us open to do what we want in the future if we find some other buildings that don't have the ability for a, a three-story ladder to reach the peak, or something similar, and it leaves us up to us to advise. But I would suggest, Tom, in regard to your thoughts, that maybe next time, when we get something from the fire department, at that time, you know, we should try and clarify whether it's necessary or, or acceptable. And then proceed on that basis, that would help us. But I think, I like what, what the applicant is volunteering to do. I think it's above and beyond what would probably be required, but by having the sprinklers then, I think the safety of the building is, is much improved, and the fire department has said it's acceptable.
But, okay, where does that leave us?
I think it leaves us taking a slightly, let me, not at all, it takes us leaving it with a volunteering statement in the resolution, which then keeps the, the applicant, you know, on that track. Now, counselor question, if the applicant, for some reason, wants to come back and say that, well, no, you know, I don't really want to do it anymore, we could reopen the, the whole session, or have some other session? How would we do that?
I mean, you could also include this, not as a condition of your approval, but just simply as a whereas clause, to acknowledge that the applicant has volunteered to sprinkler the attics of the building, and, and the fire department has found this acceptable, just as a sort of declaratory statement of fact in the, the whereas clause.
So, based on communication to the town.
But I actually have a question on that, because based on that October 2016 letter, which is a back-and-forth discussion, you know, the summary of a back-and-forth discussion with the applicant and the fire department, if the applicant were to decide at this point that he did not want to put the sprinklers in, would it go back to the fire department for them to sign off once again on a firefighting plan that they are satisfied with?
Well, we.
There's no requirement for.
No.
Well, I'm not sure what the fire department wrote.
Right, the fire department does, we, we, the communications to the fire department, I don't think are required by code. We do it as a referral courtesy, because the fire responsibility falls within the building department with the fire marshal and the building inspector.
And the referrals also for the purposes of making sure that when you have a parking lot like this, or any parking lot, that there's adequate turning radius for.
Correct, and because of the, the composition of this parking lot, that was not a concern of the, of the fire department. They discussed the equipment issues, you know, the fire department is, you know, always looking to improve their equipment. They made it very clear that from the rear, they could not reach the attic space, and the applicant said, well, we'll sprinkle it to make it, to protect ourselves.
But I think this board would have had the, the ability at that point, if they had not received that sort of offer from the applicant, to say, you can't go that high. You're going to have to take it down for safety reasons. And so therefore, I think it can be a condition, and not just a whereas. This is public safety, and this is a change, is a mitigation issue, I think, with regard to what could have been a safety issue. So had we not been satisfied with that offer from the applicant, in view of the letter we had from the, the fire department, what are we getting letters from the fire department for, if we're just going to ignore them? So if they're telling us it's inadequate, they don't have equipment to get there, and we said, well, jointly with the, the applicant, who's not required to do this, but at the same token, we're not required to approve it, we would have said, you know what, you take the, the top floor off, and you get it down to a level that the fire department can reach. And I think that's where Sheila's coming from, and I think that's exactly what we should be doing. That is what the public safety issue is all about. Otherwise, why are we asking the fire department for any, any comment ever? We just, just put in the file? No. We, we use it and we act upon it.
And you can preface your whereas clause, based on the communications you have received regarding this specific application dated on, you know, June, June, whatever, October, you know, and kind of go through the history, because there's at least three letters from the fire department on this application, and, which will justify why you want the condition you want. You know, this, the whole reason for discussing it is that you had to review every aspect of this project.
Yeah.
So, so you make a compelling argument. The, the part of it that, that I am uninformed about and becoming informed about is that our jurisdiction for public safety goes to the sprinklering of a building. And I didn't know that we had that authority to do so.
I think it goes to the height of the building.
When there's a basis for it in the record.
I know it's to the height of the building, but they're allowed to go to that height. By code, they're allowed to go to that height. By, by all the codes that we operate by, they're allowed to go to that height. So now we're inserting another provision to the height code that's saying, if the fire truck can't get up there, the height of the building has to be lower, because we are concerned about public safety, and either sprinkle the building, or they make it lower. Now, if that's.
That is part of your jurisdiction, that is absolutely part of your jurisdiction.
Okay, then I'm good with all this. Sorry to. I think it's a good conversation, but it's important to understand.
It is, yeah.
I agree, it was important to go through this.
And I think therefore, are we agreed that it should be both a whereas and a condition?
I think so.
Yes.
Right?
And a condition. Thank you.
You were okay from the beginning. We can't stand these cooperative applicants, they really drive us nuts. Would you mind fighting us on something? We like that better. This way we don't fight amongst ourselves.
Sheila has another minor point.
So this has to do with the, the sound levels of the HVAC.
Yes.
That are on the balconies. And first, I have a question about what the town code requires in terms of maximum sound levels, or dB levels, in, in that district. And so the, are we?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think it's significantly above.
Okay.
The sound levels we're talking about.
So then this is just checking a box, then?
Right.
So you have referenced that at a distance of some 300 feet from the rear of the building to the, to the nearest residences in the back.
Right.
It's reduced to something in the range of 25 decibels.
Yeah, right.
But what about the neighbor to, at 115 Bedford Road, which I think is probably closer than 300 feet?
So A, none of the balconies face that side, right? That side facing 115 is no balconies, no condensing units.
What about on the front faces?
The, you know, and the building shields those balconies, right? There's no face, there's no open face of a balcony that faces north. The building encloses those balconies on the sides.
What about balcony to balcony? No problem? What, what about balcony to balcony?
No problem? Yeah, no problem.
You've got the bite, right?
Honestly, you know, if you've ever, you know, invite you, the building around the corner on Memorial Drive, I think, I forget if I showed you in the pictures, maybe that was just to the neighbor, there are four of these condenser units mounted to the, the rear of the building facing towards their property. That's the, the one that has the, the hair salon in it, the, the other tenants there. There are four mounted on the side of the building, and I asked, you know, the, the neighbor if he's ever heard those, he's never heard them. And, you know, these are fairly quiet units to begin with, you know, as opposed to.
Well, I think, I think 56 decibels may be pretty, if I recall from previous discussions, it may be pretty close to what the limit is in that district. I, I, remember we had this discussion.
If you had this chart, the average household has a 55 is the level of an average house.
But there's actually town code that dictates how loud the decibel level can be.
Right, and there's a couple different numbers.
Okay.
In a residential district, which this is not in, it's a VR district, but in a residential district, there's specific noise limitations on air conditioning and air handling equipment, and that is at 55 decibels, and that's measured at the property line.
Okay.
So the resident next door can measure it at the property line?
Right.
And if it's above 55?
But this is not in a residential district, so this is just sort of.
The house next door is.
But it's noise emanating from.
Is that the way it says?
The business, that's, that, right, that's how it's.
So is there a, is there a business district code for?
The other, for general noise limitations, it's 60 decibels from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or 45 decibels from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
So then could we just have a demonstration, which I'm sure you can do pretty easily, that it's going to be 45 at the property line going towards 115 Bedford Road, and then that checks the box?
Sure. No problem.
Yeah, I agree with that, because the, I don't understand, if you have balconies that face the front.
Yeah.
Okay, at the road.
Right.
Okay, the noise is going to be generated on the balconies, and the noise is also going to go this way as opposed to this way, some portion of it. Because noise.
Yeah.
It isn't, you know, in a funnel.
Right, 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 no, but if the building, if there's a building wall that blocks that, I believe I'm correct to say, there's a building wall that blocks.
The end.
The end.
And that helps, but it still goes around. Noise goes around.
All right.
The sound goes around. That way, otherwise, if someone was talking here very loudly on the balcony,
Yeah.
someone over here could hear the shouting.
Yeah.
Because the wall doesn't deaden at all.
Sure, I guess.
So if you could have somebody do the calculation-
I'm sure there's a calculation, we've seen it before, and I'm sure-
To the property lines.
Yes.
Right, right.
Probably won't be an issue at all.
Right, and recall that the building face on the north side is already 75 feet from the property line, and the location of those units are even further.
And, well, but the calculation to get to 45, you know, that would be, we'd like it 45 all the time, right?
Well, the lower the better, but if the code says it has to be 45 at the property line-
At night.
At night, then we just need to see a demonstration that 58 over that distance and that angle reduces to 45 at the property line.
Yeah, it should be an easy calculation, but it's, but it's hard to go from 55 to 45, as you know, because it's a log scale.
Mm-hmm, all right.
And so you need some distance, but I think the calculation is, every hundred feet, there's a certain reduction in decibels.
Yeah, right.
It's almost a handbook thing.
Right, that's right.
You could do it quickly, probably by not trying to figure out how the wall-
Right.
Muffles it.
Right.
And if you meet it without the wall, then you're going to meet it with the wall.
Right, right, right.
So we could add a condition that says that the applicant has to demonstrate to town staff that it'll comply with the noise ordinance of the town.
Yeah, okay.
And now we can move on to 115.
Okay.
We can.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, no problem.
We're leaving the main site? No.
No, no, we're going back to 115, the issues.
I have something on the main site still, two things, but we can come back to it if you wish.
Yeah, so the material I gave you kind of envelops both the conversation with that neighbor, as well as Steve's review, last review even, about the plantings there. So a quick thing is, we had conversation with that neighbor, you had asked particularly, did they prefer the lower high trees to allow more winter sun in, or taller? They indicated back the preference for the lower, the 18 to 20 foot height limit. They also requested, that neighbor requested, we have in the plan, a four-foot-high wood screen fence all along that side of the landbanked parking, or the parallel parking along that property line. Would also have a four-foot-high screen fence that would continue on top of the retaining wall, and that four-foot fence is intended to block any automobile lights from going to the neighboring property. That neighbor requested if that fence could be six feet high, and so we've indicated we have no problem making that a six-foot-high fence. That in fact is the height, I think that across the street behind the Walgreens Shopping Center, there's a, I think a five-foot-high fence all along there, so comparable in height to that. So again, you know, we don't have a problem with increasing that fence height.
Six feet is the max, right?
Yeah, six feet is the max, right. That, so it was the fence, it was the, the trees. Now, sort of enveloping Steve's comment, the landscaping along there and related to the existing trees. There are four existing trees there, two very tall maples and two smaller, one's an ash and one's an elm. We, that neighbor in fact questioned the health of those trees, was concerned that those trees were in good condition. We had, and you have the letter, from Westchester Tree Life, look at those trees. In fact, the biggest one, the 36-inch maple, has a huge hole in the middle of the trunk, right at eye level, where it's rotting away, and clearly the upper branches are already showing that distress. One of the small trees is immediately next to it, and then the other two trees are 20, closer to, I'm sorry, I could point out on the plan, you see a 36-inch tree referenced and then a 24-inch tree.
They're down here.
Correct. Well, they're up along beside the house and towards 117.
Right.
They're circled, although there's, one says a seven inch and one says an 11 inch.
So the 24-inch maple is actually leaning out over the 91 Bedford property, very little branching going towards 115 Bedford, all of it leaning that way. And then the little tree near it is leaning towards the, because it's trying to grow out from underneath the 24-inch tree, is leaning towards the 115 Bedford property. So given all those conditions, Westchester Tree Life recommended that in fact those, all those trees come down. We're going to have to excavate, you know, 10 feet away from those trees essentially to do work on the driveway and parking area. So there, and those trees have a very high root system already for where they sit now. So there was concern just in terms of disturbing. So ultimately, we're proposing to take those trees down, and again, this was something that was initiated even by the, that neighbor out of concern for those tall trees near his house. And then the new landscaping would be the 18 to 20 foot height trees along there mixed in. We've added some winter berry trees as sort of second row towards the 115 properties to add a little depth to that screening.
So there's this, Tilia cord, cordata, where does that one go? Number three? Oh, here it is, it's down, it's up here. So I have a, one of the things which I think is really nice about those mature trees that you're saying, you're being advised really ought to be taken out.
Yeah.
This is, we're getting back to the concept here about, we're talking about the noise from the commercial district or business district to a residential district. There is this sort of notion about, we're in a transitional area where we're sort of, there's one zone abutting another zone. And one of the things which is really nice about those tall trees, is they help sort of buffer that transition.
Sure.
Those big mature trees. And it looks as though, however, and you said that the, that the abutting property owner was happy with the lower height trees and more of them, because they provide the screen.
The columnar junipers particularly.
Right. I think, I think that's great, and they should, you know, have what they like, if we can, if we can do that.
Right.
But I also wonder if there's something else we could do here, and get some, you know, get some big shade trees in here to help make that transition from a business zone to a residential-
To a residential zone, so it's not just-
Just not a wall of trees, right. If there's a way to fit them in here and make it work, that'd be, I think that'd be better.
I mean, we can have that conversation with Steve in terms of making a suggestion of some additional-
Steve, was there any use in trying to save any of those four trees? This is the first that I've seen the letter, and my first reaction is it's a little convenient to say they're all, you know, heavily, you know, decayed. I mean, I haven't had a chance to look at the trees, you know, that close. Yeah, but my hunch is the, you know, based on the size of the sugar maple, I would anticipate there would be, you know, a pretty heavy amount of decay because of the age of the tree. The Norway maple and the elm probably could be salvaged, and, you know, there could be some pruning that could be done, and, you know, they may be able to be saved. The only concern about adding shade trees is we have a very limited width on the property. You know, there's only a 10-foot strip, so they could put some shade trees in, they would have to be more columnar type shape.
Because?
Because of the location of the root system and to be able to fit it in that space as it grows.
So there's a, something-
You know, unless, I mean, they could, I mean, if you, once they mature, you know, in theory they could grow, but we'd want to accommodate to make sure that there's adequate space for the root system to develop with the parking.
Right, so what I was about, right, I get that. So what I was about to say is that one of the things I learned a long time ago was that the way, proper way to do a street tree, to get it to grow big, don't put it in a tree well, put it in a tree trench.
Right.
So that the roots can, can grow that way.
Yeah.
And they, and that will, that can work. Now, I don't know if we have too many of these junipers in here, and in order, they'll be competing with root space, for root space with a big tree. If there's a way to do it, I think it would be great, but that's your expertise.
I mean, what I would suggest is, the 10-foot width is problematic to create a good transition between the two, you know, the commercial and the residential. If, if there was a way to do some, with the homeowner willing, you know, to do some on their side. I think you could accomplish that. The other thought is if these trees do have to come out, you know, then another thought would be to put, you could fit in a higher density of the evergreens and then maybe mix in a couple deciduous, you know, trees with that to get the canopy, you know, as it grows, you know, in the future.
I presume you can't plant in the landbank spot for the parking?
Well, we, we talked about that among the staff of whether we could do that, but then the problem is if they needed it in the future, the tree would have to be relocated or taken out.
Short a tree.
I mean, it could be a short-term thing, or it could be a long-term, but, you know.
Can't rely on it.
Can't rely on it.
Is the intention to excavate the landbank parking spaces at this time, or?
No, actually.
Leave those as is?
We're just taking out this paved right now curb along there, so we have to pull all that stuff out to be able to-
Right.
Put in a lawn area or-
One question for you, though, with the homeowner, do they understand if the larger trees do come out, that, you know, it's going to change the visual look that they have quite a bit?
I would, yeah, I didn't ask him that particular question, but-
Because the smaller trees are not going to be the same as what's currently there.
Right, right, yeah. I think his primary concern was just that the proximity of the large trees, his house is only 15, I think about 15 feet away from those trees, that, you know, more of a concern of the structure. But, you know, I would think he would be willing to discuss, you know, replacement trees, maybe that are on, locate on his property so that we replace that kind of character, and I totally agree in terms of the character of that.
It may have been cleaner if we could keep it within that 10-foot buffer, just so that it's, you know, clear, but I-
Right.
I'm a little concerned that there's enough space to do that.
I hear you, I hear you, right. I got it.
Sheila, you had a concern?
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about putting the mitigating screening trees onto the neighbor's property, because it seems to me that goes in the face of an applicant mitigating impacts on his own property, which is what we require in all applications. In this case, by shifting it to the neighboring property, we're impinging on his land, which is very small at that point. That's a, that's a very small strip that he has between the end of his property line, the abutting property, and his house. But actually, that's not even the issue, because the real issue is that it's his property, and he's being asked to surrender some of his own property to mitigate an impact that's being created by another applicant.
Yes.
And, and, you know, it's not only just the land, but once those trees are planted, the whole burden of maintaining that screening is his. It's on his property, he's got to prune them, he's got to replace them if they die.
Understood. I think it's voluntary, we're not requiring that this would happen.
That's right.
But what I, but what-
I don't, it's not clear to me that he's actually agreed to it.
No, he hasn't. Might, might I just, as a clarification, both of the two large trees, the maples are right on the property line, so, you know, it's not full, they're not fully on 91 Bedford, they're on the property line.
I'm talking about the replacement trees.
But he's talking about how to take it down, he needs permission to take it down.
Well, so I would, I'm thinking, what we're saying is, the mitigate, sorry, the mitigating plantings, the columnar junipers, all of that is on 91 Bedford, clearly. The, I think what we're talking about is these existing trees, large size, whether they could, should be replaced fully on the 91 Bedford property, which is creating a tighter condition, or could those particular trees be located on the neighbor's property?
With their agreement.
With their agreement.
Not requiring.
And again, they're, they're a tree, it's on the, they're on the property line, five years from now, a year from now, next month, that tree could come down. And the one is very heavily diseased, so we're not talking about, I don't think we're talking about mitigate, you know, these are not replacing these trees as a mitigation, these are replacing the trees as a safety measure to improve it, right?
I'm not talking about the new trees that you've introduced tonight into the discussion, which are the diseased trees and-
Okay.
Pending Steve's review of them, and which ones he thinks truly should come down, and which ones he thinks might be saved. That's a different discussion. I'm talking about a planting plan which puts the, and there's a whole clause in the draft resolution about this, which puts the mitigating screening of the smaller trees-
Yeah.
-onto the neighbor's property.
We're not proposing that, I'm not sure where that comes from, I mean-
Well, it's in the draft resolution.
There was a recommendation that I put in as a way to potentially resolve the-
That's what I'm talking about.
Issue of screening, you know, for the neighbor.
Right, and I, I agree, it can't be a requirement, it shouldn't be a requirement, it should be an offer to replace these shade trees if the, if the neighbor wants them, and I think it would benefit, I think it would benefit the town for them to be there.
We're talking about two different sets of trees now.
Yeah.
The shade trees, the shade trees, which we just learned tonight-
Yeah.
-might have to come down, is a new discussion to have with that neighbor, because it's not clear to me that, that he knows that those trees might come out, and what the impact on his visuals would be when those old mature trees do come out. I'm talking about the planting plan for the smaller 15 to 20 foot trees, which he has agreed to as, as being the type of tree that he wants to see for screening there.
But that's, that's not on his property, that's on the applicant's property.
No, it's actually-
I'm so confused.
Well, I'm looking at the drawing here.
It's, what-
Except in the resolution, it's clear that they're being shifted to the-
Maybe I can help clarify that.
No, that's for in the future. That's, that's-
That was a future-
Steve has something-
I'm very confused about what's happening.
How I am too.
My initial, my initial review assumed that the existing trees would remain, and my concern is planting the junipers underneath the existing drip line was not a, not a recommended practice. So an alternative to still provide the screening was to use what was done with Homeland Towers, was to give that option for a neighbor voluntarily, you know, to consider having the trees be placed on their property, to allow the existing trees to remain and the junipers to be put in in a location where they would perform better and not impact the existing trees. So it would be totally voluntary, the applicant would have to agree to provide the initial funding, but it would be totally up to the neighbor to do it and then be responsible after that.
But now the existing trees need to come down, so-
But wait a minute, I want to go back to the homeland example first.
The story has changed now, because if we take the trees down, there may not be a need to go on the property. You know, we do have a 10-foot strip, we could work within that and try to come up with the best we can.
Right.
Or the other option would be to still consider a voluntary type approach where we do some plant, you know, allow the neighbor, if they wanted to, do some plantings on their property in addition to what we could do within that 10-foot strip.
I think the homeland example is a very different kind of example, because it's very difficult to screen for a cell tower. You're talking about screening something, in this case, that was 140-foot high, but it could be as much as 150-foot high. And, you know, there's no way you can plant around the tower and provide any screening for a neighbor. So I think, Dick, you came up with a very clever solution in that case, which was to offer the people across the street the opportunity to plant on their property, so that they would have, you know, as those trees grow and the angles are correct, it provides screening for something that's a few hundred feet away from them. That was a very special kind of situation and a very clever solution to that situation. This is sort of one of our first transitional zone applications, and I think, Tom, you made during the town development plan discussions, you made a very interesting point about mitigation when you said, well, you know, we have to consider all this off-site mitigation, because if it needs to be off-site, maybe there's just too much going on on the property. And I think this is a case where an applicant is creating an impact, and the burden of mitigating that impact should fall on the applicant and not on a neighbor, whether or that impact should fall on the applicant and not on a neighbor, whether or not he's gracious enough to say, yes, you can put some junipers on my property. I think the issue is really, how do you deal with transitions, how do you deal with mitigations? And should it stay as we've most, in, in most cases, except for Homelander, we've always had the mitigation on the site of the applicant.
So, you know, I couldn't agree more, and this is one of Bob's big things also, and I think he's right about this. In this particular case, now that we're actually talking about this level of detail, I think that I would have viewed this site plan a little bit differently if we had had this conversation three months ago.
And we knew that.
And we would have allowed for what we're talking about now in order to create that, help create that transition from property to property. I, I just wonder if it's a little bit late in the process to deal with it here.
Well, I mean.
But I agree with you.
I think we have to.
In principle.
We didn't, all along, we were assuming that the mitigation, the planting, was taking place on the applicant's property. As we're sitting here with our draft resolution tonight, we're all of a sudden looking at a situation where the mitigation is being proposed to be off-site, or some of that mitigation is proposed to be off-site.
No, it's not, is it?
Yes.
No, it's not.
We're not proposing it, so.
No.
I think it was an option Steve was suggesting.
Steve is saying that the old trees have to come, the reason that they were going to put the new trees on the applicant's property or asked to was because Steve didn't want them under the existing trees. Now the exist, now the existing trees need to come down, so all that can go on-site. So, right now, there's nothing, there may be something in the resolution needs to be fixed, but.
But I think this is an important conversation.
I, I agree.
Because we only learned that these trees were coming down, and we haven't seen a site plan where the mitigating trees.
I agree.
Right.
I agree.
This is the first time we're seeing all of this.
I agree.
And please keep in mind that this, this has not been verified by Steve.
Right.
You know, this is, this is a letter from a company regarding an application, we don't have any basis for whether or not it's true or not, you know, Steve, this is Steve's, under his purview. So, what, what, the condition in the resolution was getting at was because it was, there was concern about the applicant doing planting on their property, given the existing trees and their survivability of the planting, and, you know, putting a lot of money towards never-ending goal, or never, a goal that we could not reach in the sense of revegetation because of the existing trees. This was in that event that the board was willing to consider what we had considered in relation to Homeland Towers, where the applicant put up money for planting on the neighboring property if what was there was not good enough once the building was constructed. So, there was the advantage of seeing the building in place and then assessing the existing tree coverage.
That's a way to handle it too, I like that. The, but mathematically, I, I would offer that homeland is not that far apart, that the, if you have a very tall tower, then the only place you can screen it logically is close to the, the home that may be offended by it. If you make it a smaller building or a tower and you bring it closer, you may still have the same problem. Now, your point is a good point, an excellent point, that we want as much as we can to have all this on the, the property of the applicant. But I believe that just like a homeland, the Homeland Tower was a special circumstance, this whole thing about going from one zone to another zone in a transition is also a special case. So, if you have two special cases, mathematically, the same solution could work. Now, I would say, and I think you, or you would agree with this, that I don't know that we're ready to go beyond until this is sorted out with this new information that just came in, which is very valuable information, because if the thirty-six DBH sugar maple has to go.
Exactly.
Or if, then, that frees up the space to do something, and we just have to figure out the right mix, which Steve can do, and that, so we.
But, but I, I actually feel very strongly, esp, you know, now we're going to start looking at transitional zones, because.
I hope so, yeah.
So, I feel very strongly that anything that happens in these areas, you have to look at all the mitigation going on the site, that has to, it has to work within the site.
Right, and can I, yes, and just so that, because I think it's more than just, sorry, I think the issue is more than just screening from the adjacent neighbor, I think it has to do with the, with the, with the overall character of the town, that we're creating these different districts and protection from one district to another.
Yeah, and really, it, it should really be a transition. One of the things, thoughts I had was, now that we have this new information, it seems to me that, going back to the question about land banking, parking spaces, we have land bank ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
On the northern edge, you know, if we have a fairly high level of confidence that we have enough parking here anyway, and I think you have another three land banked in the rear.
Right.
Thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Right.
Might not we pull the wall in and then use that entire space on the northern side for mitigation, put our plants in there, we could put large trees in there, it's going to be recaptured anyway in terms of pulling up the old driveway, and then we can still show those as land banked, and again, if there's something goes awry in the future, we can always change that around, but I think we should have pretty good confidence between the applicant and ourselves that this is going to work, use those four, we still have three that are easily reopened for parking in the rear, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, but then if we pull the wall in away from one fifteen, we have additional space for planting the trees, the walls pulled back ways.
So, if we had, if we, if we had a, I know, I know it's not your fault, but we don't have, so I'm going to draw something here.
Yeah.
Actually, I've already.
I still think it's Michael's fault.
Draw as you'd like.
Come look for a second here, and Bob, and everybody, just, you don't maybe need to move the wall, maybe you just need to create an island there.
Between parking spaces.
And there's a tree. You put one here.
You could, you could easily fit two or three large trees.
What you end up with, instead of four land bank spaces, you ended with one, two, three, and we lost one.
Right, and, and honestly, given that we're now messing with required parking, I mean, as it is, land banking is, is giving, you know, leniency to not having enough parking and, and making assumptions, I would hate to move a wall and, you know, it's easier to cut down trees and to pave if you need to, and then they have to deal with the mitigation, and maybe those trees that are old and decrepit now will definitely be gone by then.
At least we're just dropping one land bank.
Correct.
If this plan, if this concept.
Correct, correct, I would try and preserve as many of the land banked areas as possible, or limit the addition, the planting areas to those spaces.
Well, the issue I have on that is to make certain that we have enough space for the roots in those areas that we're designating, I'll leave that to Steve.
Correct.
To look at and make sure that that will work as well.
And, and I will tell you, Steve first came to me with this, and, and, you know, his suggestion was to use the land bank parking spaces, and I reluctantly said, I don't know, I don't feel so comfortable getting rid of all of those parking spaces and really adjusting the site plan by moving the wall to allow that, but to just plant in those spaces to make up for the area, you know, if the board agrees to do that, there is opportunity to reclaim that area if needed in the future, and I think that's what's important.
Does the wall begin all the way out toward seventeen?
No, just at the beginning of that land bank space, that first land bank space is where that wall would start.
Thirteen or ten?
Ten.
Ten. So, this is a wall here. See, by, by doing that, by putting trees here, you're artificially restricting the size of the roots again in that really narrow area, as opposed to having a larger area. I mean, I, I think you could still draw it as a land bank, you say it's a parking space, but in the future, if you need it, you have to build it.
Ben, you want to weigh in on that, Jack?
By the way, the wall, the wall is a fence, right, it's a wood post fence, it's not a, there's not a.
It's not a concrete wall at that point?
No, no.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a wood post fence until.
So, is that an existing grade bill?
Yes.
Then I would suggest we could go, move the fence out to the.
Ten and eleven are just.
They were graded?
On grade.
Right. That, and that.
So, it's only a twelve and thirteen that you get to a retaining wall?
What, exactly.
Okay.
Twelve and thirteen, the grade starts falling down, and so that retaining wall starts there.
I think that gives us a lot of flexibility.
If you take one space, which is, if it's parallel parking, that's eight feet by twelve, twenty-five.
Yeah, I think nineteen even.
You divide that one, that one space into two planter areas, which is eight feet by twelve and a half.
Yeah.
In that works, you've got enough there to plant a big shaped tree.
Yeah, right.
So, you'll have plenty of root space underneath everything, as long as you don't do a maple, which will come up.
Right, right, right.
So, there's a species that'll work here, and we lose one space, one land bank space.
Temporarily.
If the day ever comes, when for some reason this town is going to require that one more space, we're going to take down two mature trees, well, that day, but that's in the future.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, it's going to suggest if.
If we can approve that, Sabrina.
Yeah.
Instead of four land bank spaces here, then we're good to go.
How many spaces are required by code?
We've got a chart on there, I believe it told us fifty-six.
And how many spaces are being provided, including all the land bank spaces?
You will keep the same number of land bank spaces.
Yes.
But temporarily allow planting.
Planting within one of them.
Yeah.
Or two of them.
One or two, ten or eleven, which one?
I think ten and eleven.
Yeah, two.
Wait, wait, let's, let's.
Say one.
Twelve.
He needs a new landscape plan here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Now, in the, in the, in the concept of trying to get to a resolution, is it possible to say, work with Steve, we're going to include a planter area in one of the land bank spaces to incorporate mature, or incorporate, you know, a shade tree.
Two.
Or two shade trees.
Three.
Yeah.
There's place for three here.
Right.
As many as possible.
Yeah.
Can they do that?
Can we see a sketch?
How's our definition of land banking going?
Yeah, can we do the resolution, though, we have to come back to you as a condition still for a final.
I'd like to see the sketch of it.
Sign the plan.
I would like to see it, because I think it would, there are some clauses in the resolution.
Even if we just circulate it.
I think we'd come out altogether, and we should know that before we vote on the resolution.
That's a good point, it does change the resolution by quite a bit.
It would change the resolution.
Okay.
Enough to justify coming back, but I have a question, can we close the public hearing and then work this out after the public hearing is closed, so that, you know.
Well, say the neighbor wants to talk about it.
Yeah.
I don't think, I think, yeah, he has the right to talk.
It's a fair point.
I'd keep it open.
I have one more thing I want to say about the planting. Would you be more comfortable with a ten-year monitoring plan specifically because?
Yeah, I have that on my, no, it's ten.
Specifically because of the importance of all these plantings to the transition zone and the mitigation and all that?
I have that somewhere too, I think.
Yeah, we just didn't get there yet.
Okay.
Oh, my God.
Okay. Just, you know.
Okay, so.
But we.
I have other, two other.
Okay, okay.
The, how, where is the groundwater level relative to the, the base of the basement? How much distance?
Say that one more time, groundwater, did you say?
Groundwater, there's groundwater under the site.
I think we did a test pit and it was.
Eight, eight feet dry.
Yeah, we did not get the groundwater.
And so, you didn't get the groundwater, and so, do you feel comfortable that, you know, the level of the wetland behind is such that it's going to be so far beneath the base of the basement that there's at least three feet?
Oh, yes.
You definitely are comfortable with that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Second thing, how does, how does the drains in the basement work in the garage?
They'll, they'll still go to the drywall system.
And will the drywall system have some sort of protection in it so that if someone accidentally changes the oil in the garage?
It doesn't backflow. Oh, oh, I see.
There's going to be pre-treatment tanks, so.
And, well, they're pre-treatment tanks, but sometimes they're just for sand and not oil.
Yeah, we're not de-oiling.
Come up, Michael. Thank you.
We're not de-oiling, we, we didn't have that task to de-oil everything, they, oh, boy. Basically, cars nowadays don't drip oil like they used to. All cars used to always drip oil, every car dripped oil, there was no such thing as a car that didn't drip oil, and, but nowadays, cars don't put out the kind of oil mess that they used to.
There's still a requirement to change the oil, and there are some people that feel mechanically inclined to do it.
I can't speak for them, and I can't speak for what they have rules, regulations at the place.
That was in the original.
Yeah, yeah.
See?
If you need to, you can have them put in your leases, you can't change your oil in the garage.
Well, I mean, people.
They can put an oil grease separator.
They could.
Before it goes to the pre-treatment.
They could do that, or.
They could do that from the garage, not from the parking lot, but from the garage, they could.
From the parking lot drain.
Yeah, from the parking lot drain, where it goes.
Yeah.
You know, I would recommend that if you, if it's, at the very least, there's space left for that with a manhole that can be put in later.
They did that in the firehouse.
Yeah.
Did that in the firehouse?
Mm-hmm.
Jeez.
Well, I'm going to do it.
A little bit different in application, but they did put that in.
So few anymore. All right, so that would be my, my suggestion there to somehow deal with that, I'm not sure how far to go on, I don't want to go crazy with things, but on the other hand, you know, because you're going to have salt going in, you know, tracking salt, and that's going to be washed down every now and then, it's going to go in there, can't do much with that.
Maybe they can size it too.
Okay.
Sizing calculations for it.
Yeah.
Well, there's no runoff, so it'd be just.
Use something like.
Well, it wouldn't be.
From the interior, if it's from underneath the building, just.
There's not going to be much in the way of runoff unless it's sloped to go in.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's going to be sloped to go in, right?
Well, there's a.
Slope to go up and go in?
Well, yeah, there is a, a low spot, it's, there's a place for collecting water that comes down the.
Down the road, but does.
Down the road, and gets collected.
There's a collector before you enter the garage.
Right.
Okay, that's where it should be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the, the thought would be, that's the only drain, there's no other drain in the garage.
No, no, but they could, they could, they could make it so the, the whole garage drains that way, for whatever they track in, anything, it would always go that way, they, that wouldn't be hard to make the floor just go that way.
Okay, so if you did that, and then you had, you know, room for the, the collector of someone, and signs up, do not change your oil, or something like that.
Yeah, they, they can make rules, it's, you know.
Yeah, so you could be thrown out, and then if you leave the space for what I'm, what we're talking about, you could always install it later if it's impossible to control what goes on in, in the garage. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm finished.
Okay, anyone else anything? Do we have any comments from the public on this application? Steve, was there anything else that you wanted to talk about?
No, that was the primary thing, and I'm just getting this memo. I think I can meet with Bill and we could come up with some concepts.
But you had the idea that what, what the board's talking about here, yeah, okay. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Rob Campolongo, I'm one of the owners of one thirty-seven Bedford Road, and I strongly appreciate your attention to that transition zone and all the attention you gave, I'm, I'm really happy to see that, and I'm glad that you appreciate that and paying attention to it, I really do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last comment. Sabrina, where did you go? On item sixteen, impact of human health.
Are you looking at part?
Page nine of ten.
Part two.
Of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, part two thing, right. My recollection is that there is a licensed daycare center within fifteen hundred feet.
At the end of the memorial.
Memorial, right.
Oh.
Opland daycare?
And so, it, I think you have to check yes, and then say no or small impact, because it's there.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't studied it, but it seems to be far enough away and downhill, so I don't see, you know, a, a groundwater issue or something like that, and the safety of that whole road is a separate road, it's not part of this.
Mm-hmm, yep, good call, good catch.
Oh, and actually, there would be one more change if we are all agreeing to a ten-year maintenance.
Yep.
In the narrative, there's a reference to the five-year maintenance plan, should that be changed to the ten-year plan?
And that's a good catch.
One suggestion on the tree and the wetland monitoring is because they're so integral to each other, I would suggest we do just one monitoring instead of a separate wetland and a separate tree.
Sure, makes sense, yeah, okay. Um, how quickly you, can you get this back to us, I mean, with these changes in the planning plan?
Um, Friday.
That's pretty good.
Is that too, too slow?
Ah, it's too slow. Sorry, the deal's off. Janice, when do we meet again, in December?
December fifth.
December five?
Yeah.
How's that agenda look?
Okay.
Carry the public hearing over to December five, again, with the changes in the resolution that we've discussed this evening, and perhaps have a leg up?
Um, I thought we had another meeting in November.
We do, but I don't think it'll be, we have it in time for staff to turn around two weeks.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, we do. I mean, we'll have it in right away.
It's up to, it's up to staff if they can get it reviewed, et cetera. I'm happy to do it, doesn't matter, I'll be here, we'll be here.
The next meeting is December fifth, and the deadline is.
Yeah, the dead, the next meeting is December fifth.
We don't have one in the next every week?
No, we do not. No.
Oh, we have eleven, twenty seconds?
It's not on your schedule.
When that happen?
Geez.
Hey.
Hey.
That's why I wasn't asking for opinions last year.
That's, that's two thousand eight. That's, that's for next year.
About two weeks from tonight, do we have a meeting two weeks from tonight?
No, it's not on the schedule.
This is for November?
No, this is it for.
Or thirteen days from tonight.
Yes.
But we're happy to be here if you want to have one.
Only if it's pumpkin pie.
I'll mean, come if you like.
I'll bring the pumpkin pie.
If it costs more than five dollars, we can probably.
Okay, so we'll see you then on.
December fifth.
December fifth.
The deadline is November thirteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Um, I'm just looking at the lighting information again, could you clarify for the parking lot fixtures, not the decorative ones?
Yeah.
What are the height of the poles?
I think they're ten feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, and it would be great, actually, if you get your thumb drive to work next time, too.
Yeah, I, I promise I'll figure that out. That's, that's the thing that makes me the most nervous coming here, is the unknown of that outcome.
You can send us your stuff ahead of time.
What's that?
Send us your stuff ahead of time, we'll put it on.
Test it.
Yeah, the flash drive beforehand, and we'll see if.
And so you're continuing a public hearing until December fifth?
Yes, we're continuing a public hearing, yes, yeah.
And in other words, that means other people have been able to plug their thumb drives in there.
Well, I don't know about tonight. It could change.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll see you then. Okay, thank you.
What?
This transition stuff is very.
Yeah.
This is our first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so.
I think you're right, we have to get on top of this.
Bill, are you going over there?
We have to take.
Bill.
Thank you.
If they care, they don't know.
You're so handy.
Okay, we move now to our next application.
I'm gonna give him my seat at the end. Bob, I have to go to the town board.
Okay, is there anything that you, we have your memo?
I told Bob what I needed, because we prepared a memo for you, he'll, he'll know, he'll change.
Okay, okay, we go to our next, uh, matter, this is an informal hearing for a pending application, it's the Campfire Club of America, application for a wetlands permit, steep slopes permit, pre-removal permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, and for the record, I think it's our second application, it's beginning at seven nineteen.
Hmm.
Mark it down, Janice, in the record, right? Okay. Oh. Oh, it goes off after a while?
I think we can go right to sheet three.
Steve coming back?
Yes, yes.
I would think so.
Oh, here they come.
His phone and stuff is here, huh?
Greg and Steve are coming back, I assume, though.
Jerry Barrett, I'm here with Word French from the Campfire Club, and Alan Pilch is the project engineer. Since we were here last, we took into consideration the comments received from the planning board and town staff, and we believe we have addressed the majority of those, at least from what we gather from the, uh, from the memos. The things that, that changed, if you will, or were improved, is we, we did more work on the parking area, we added more islands, we added more shade trees, previously we were showing smaller trees, they were dogwoods, we have changed those to all major shade trees, the idea is to, to provide more shading in the parking lot. We've added, as we get down a, a little further in the plans, we've added substantially more planting in the mitigation area that was requested. Uh, the, Alan's going to talk a little bit about the stormwater, he's done a little bit more work on the stormwater. Essentially, the plan, I think, that the board had seen before, is essentially still the same plan, but with modifications and additions, so let's go to the next one, Ward. I think one of the, one of the comments, uh, that, one of the outstanding comments that Steve Coleman noted, he was a little concerned with the amount of stormwater getting into wetlands C and D, you'll recall, those are the two pocket wetlands, um, right in this area, and what we. Okay, so they are right here, this is, you're seeing, this is C and D, or this is C and this is D, they're right here. And what we had done, we had run, right here, we have run a curb, a stone curb, a, a natural field stone curb, the idea was to allow Alan to corral this stormwater and pick it up, because again, he was going to pick up all the water off of the parking lot. Steve was a little concerned that we weren't, we were, that, that the, that the, the wetlands might be deprived of a little hydrology, we did discuss it, there is, there is quite a, a flow coming from the back, but we discussed a simple thing we can do, is we could just pop out a couple of stones along the way so we can let water drain into them, so I think, I think we have that resolved. And, uh, you know, there's, there's some other things, we have some details a little later, Bob Sciolli had asked us to, to put some details together on how this under-drain works and how these aeration pipes work, so we have a detail on, on one of the latter plans to show how that all comes to, together. One of the things that was brought up previously, uh, with the, with the turning radius, we have this to, this will, this will not accommodate an SU thirty vehicle, if you recall, if we had to do that, we have a plan in here that shows a lot more disturbance, a lot more wetland disturbance, tree removals, steep slope disturbance, um, on the suggestion of the town engineer, felt that perhaps if we could just have some signage in this area indicating that, you know, if, you know, you're not going to turn an SU thirty truck around there, but notwithstanding, you could still, even the fire department said they could come in here and back right in, so we, we would just like to get some confirmation from the board that they're comfortable with that, uh, to go with the, with, with the loop road as it is, um, the, the, any major delivery that has to come can come right in the front door, and we have plenty of room to turn around here. Um, I think we can move to the next one, Ward.
As context, where do these wetlands flow after this, is it just percolation that goes it, or is it, is this eventually going to the watershed, it heads north to the Croton, or?
Well, these particular ones have an outlet pipe, you know, everything drains across to the other side, and, you know, down where the parking is proposed, everything was, you know, picked up via pipes and discharges there, so it goes into the first one and, and works its way to the larger swamp.
But from the swamp, does it go anywhere, or is it the headwaters or anything?
It's a growing watershed.
It's not?
Yeah, yeah, but that probably works its way to the Echo Lake area.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to get that context, thank you.
We, we, we traced it, and when it leaves the site, and it, it flows along the ticonic, and there's some deep, deep pits there, it, it's, that's, that's it, that's the end of the line, and I think it just fills up and percolates in, but there's no out, outlet from that point on.
That's, that's what I suspected, that's what I suspected, okay.
I think the thing is, there's just a lot of storage in that onsite wetland.
Right, right, okay.
Uh, so, this was our erosion control plan, and, uh, and, you know, we did, uh, we, we did work on, you know, more slope stabilization that was requested on, on, on there, I think probably we have some protection, these are the two wetlands that we talked to, this is C and this is D, and this is where we have the core log protection, so this is almost going to act during construction as kind of like a, a silt fence, I like it better than the silt fence because it's not this big black ugly thing that falls down, this thing gets staked right, right to the ground, and it stays there.
And it works.
And it works, and it stays there.
So it looks like a log, I, I tried to look it up online.
Yeah, and, and actually, the plants grow right through it.
I've seen them before, and didn't know what they were, and now, then I went and looked them up.
And it, it'll just make a permanent diversion, this is where we have the curbing, where we're going to start, this curbing starts here and it runs to here, so we'll just be popping out curbs to allow that to go through, um, but I think the, the significant change on this one, the board had asked for a, an easement area for the drainage, so we just came up with a really simple L, goes right out to Campfire Road, it comes right down, and goes right out to the stormwater area, so it seems that there would be plenty of access, uh, if anyone had to get in there to do anything.
I mean, if I can say something on this, I mean, if you, it's a lot of work to get the easement, the meets and bounds, the surveyor, and incorporate that into, I've seen other properties where we've done it in the past, the entire property is the easement, and it's just by virtue of Schedule A.
Mm-hmm.
It'll save you some time and money and effort.
Well.
That's up to you.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll do it the way that we have, because you really think about it, it's two, two hundred and thirty acres, and meets and bounds, which.
Well, no, we'll just be your Schedule A, your property deed, that's up to you, you make the call.
It's kind of why we made it a simple L, to keep.
I looked at it, it looks fine to me, yeah.
Simple. Um, good thought, good try, but there's some people, tonight, everybody wants to spend money.
Yeah, made from coconut fiber.
This must have been our steep slope disturbance plan, and I think we could just go right to the next one, Ward, we don't need to.
You don't want to.
I don't think we have anything new on that. Mitigation planting plan would be a good one, that's, we did quite, quite a bit of work on that, added, added quite a bit of trees and, and shrubs, and I think that if, if you looked at the, if, if you looked at the two plans, this has really been filled in very densely, and particularly right in here, Steve was, Steve wanted this whole area planted, so if this basin ever does overflow this berm, we have a, a very densely planted filter strip here that'll hold the side of the berm in, in place, we've also went up and we've added a bunch of naturalized plantings along the, the, the right-of-way, this is the overhead electrical line, and we've, we've planted all that, that, this, everything you see in, in, in green, all this was put in partially to mitigate for some of the, the paving of, of the parking lot, so, so there's been quite a bit of extra plantings, again, more tree plantings, so we've really beefed up the plantings throughout the entire site.
Parking plan?
Parking plan, I think we've, I think we're good with that, um, the vehicle, let's go to the, the vehicular turning move, movement plan, I think that one, the parking plan, I think everybody's satisfied with. Um, yeah, this is the, the area where we, what I alluded to earlier, that if we had to expand this, if we had to expand this, this is our loop road as proposed, if we had to expand it to get the SU thirty vehicle in there, we would have to expand it here, and then here you've got another, I think it's about fifteen hundred square feet of slope disturbance, wetland buffer disturbance, tree removals, doesn't seem to be necessary, so we would like to kind of put that, put that issue to bed, and get the board's, you know, con, concurrence on that, that that wouldn't be necessary.
Well, I, yeah, personally, I, I really wholeheartedly stand behind limiting the amount of steep slope disturbance, so.
Great.
Do we do a straw poll?
No.
I'm, I'm, I agree.
Ward, can you go to the, the details one, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to the D details, and then we can go back to the site distance one, and I'll have Alan talk to that one. So what we wanted to point out here is we were asked to detail how the, the gravel drip strip is going to work around the building, and so basically, it's just going to be a big gravel trench, it'll be, have some filter fabric through it, it'll be some large coarse rock, there'll be a six-inch perforated pipe, this goes all the way around the bottom of the bill, all the way around the base of the building, and ties into the drainage system that Alan has, has prepared. And what we did here was, what we tried to show is, this is, I know it's very hard to see, but what you're seeing here, this is, this is where that thirty-inch oak is that we're trying to preserve, this is a wall on the inside of the loop road, this is the wall on the outside of the loop road, this signature here is that V cut, we're going to be putting at the base of the road, and that's going to have that under-drain pipe that'll take any gravel, and any flows that migrate through the gravel, and then what you have running perpendicular to that, these are the aeration pipes that go right through, so they'll be providing air, aeration, but they'll also, any water that accumulates in here will also be able to pass through to the vegetation below, so we tried to detail that, because Bob wanted that clarified a little bit, so that's what this plan shows, and we can go back to the vehicle sightline thing, and maybe Alan, you want to talk about that one?
Are you available to come to all of our meetings where you have, we have something to put in the computer?
This is the most expert use of media.
We could give you the same salary we have.
If you just do Ctrl-L, you'll get full screen, you don't have to keep doing that.
Yeah, great.
It's upside down.
That's okay.
I don't know that we noticed.
We can't read, we can't read it.
It's down in our heads, we can do it, so. So what we observed, we, we met out at the site, Ward, Jerry, myself, Bob, and Steve Coleman met at the site, and I guess this is depicting the existing entrance, the main entrance, Campfire Road being here, and what we looked at were the stopping site distances at this intersection being a hundred twenty-five feet for a vehicle approaching, I'll say, from the west, and a hundred twenty-five feet for a vehicle approaching from the east, and what we discussed doing were, first of all, clearing, and we actually did clear the vegetation here on the north side of Campfire Road, and by doing that, we provide one hundred thirty-five feet of stopping site distance for a vehicle approaching the drive from the west.
And how is that done, is that town property, is that part of the?
Easement.
Easement, that's.
Well, I would recommend, it's part of town property in the right-of-way, and also might go onto their property, which they own across the street.
Oh, okay.
But I would recommend, I would recommend when everything's all said and done, to have easement agreements here to make certain that that is maintained in perpetuity, because as you know, that grows quite often, so that's one of my recommendations.
Sure, okay, good. And secondarily, on the other side, which is where that hill, that rock area is, we looked at this, and we noted that if we were to cut back about eighteen feet from the edge of pavement, and took out two trees, both of which are in, say, rough condition, fair condition to poor condition, that we could accomplish our one hundred twenty-five foot of stopping site distance for a vehicle approaching from the west, and so that is actually the proposal that we are going to, that we are proposing, to improve the stopping site distance at the intersection of the main entrance.
So what, so what is the, at the highest point, what's the depth of the cut you have to?
Six or seven feet.
Six or seven feet, that's all?
Right.
And would you be?
Six or seven feet for sixty feet, it's substantial.
Right, so it's the.
Laterally, it's about sixty feet, but it's about six, seven feet.
Those are two-foot contours?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's more substantial when you go out there and look at it than it looks.
So is it rock, or you'd be laying it back at a two-to-one or three-to-one?
It's probably rock.
Yeah.
So, will you be treating that face at all, or just, how will you?
You can hammer it back.
Just hammer it back and leave it, or will you be?
I think if it can go back to a one-on-one, I think that would be the best thing.
Or you leave it as a rock face, and then you treat it with something in front of it, like stone wall or something, just for aesthetic reasons, not retaining wall.
In general, if it's good, if it's good rock, in the past, we've experienced one-on-six, if it's good rock.
No, I understand that, what I'm saying is just the aesthetics of it, and what, because you, you hammer rock and you got this, you could end up with this awful-looking thing, that's all.
I can assure you, you're not going to lose something that we're not happy with in terms of the aesthetics, and secondarily, the, the rock, it's aired out, it's been hammered back at some previous point in time, probably with much more vicious equipment, but in that case, it's rough and ragged now, we'll certainly make it no worse than it is now.
Well, no worse is, if it's that bad, then saying no worse is not, it's not a helpful argument.
We've never had a complaint about it, quite frankly, it looks natural.
I, I, I think we can go along the top of that rock cut and plant some vines that'll trail back over that kind of natural, naturalize, and, you know, the bottom will be cleaned up, it'll be cleaned up.
Okay.
To natural litter, and it'll be very, you know, very, in keeping with what's there now, but I think putting some vines at the top and the bottom, I think it'll cover, and before you know it, it'll.
Fair enough. Okay, I'm good with that.
I have a question about the elevations there, so, or the grade, what is the elevation of the, the roadway right in front of the main entrance, or, or really more to the point, is there a big drop-off between the road, the grade of the road and the driveway as it, as it, as it enters into the property?
You mean like from here into the property?
Yes.
No, it really, I'd say it really isn't, it's actually a fairly gentle slope there, I'd have to go look to see what the actual grade is, I know there was discussion about that the last time.
So, yeah, the question would be, is there any advantage to raising that mouth of the driveways, would that get you any more sightline distance?
You know, I kind of, I looked at that myself, because the min, the maximum grades on driveways, especially at entrances, is only five percent, which is not much, so I really wouldn't recommend moving that up, and then you're going to make it matters worse, a little bit further down the road, yes, and you can't pick up that grade.
I think it's only a few percent. I think it's only a few percent.
It's tough.
It's, it's not really a...
It doesn't steeply slope backward.
It really is, it's when you get further into the property, it's when, oops, that means, it becomes steeper.
It's super steep.
Yeah, look at the car, look at the car next to it, right? We're sitting right between the two dimensions.
This is, yeah, this is okay.
Yes, you're right, you're going down two feet in about 16 to 18 feet. Just a little over 10.
I would say it was about five at the apron.
Which is about what you like to see as a max, right? A few percent, but I don't think it's much.
It looks like it's between five and 10 here.
No, I think it's further down where it gets steeper, here it's pretty...
Yeah, it starts to drop right in here.
So in other words, when you're idling and ready to pull out, you're pretty much at the same, you're practically at the same grade level as the road itself.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It's really a...
Best you can, within five percent.
If you like, I can talk about the service entrance, here. We looked at view, first of all, looking from westbound vehicles, approaching from the Taconic, or from Route 100, in this direction, assuming at 40 miles an hour, which is 10 miles per hour with the speed limit, whatever it is, the stopping sight distance there was about 250 feet at 40 miles per hour, and we actually have an actual sight distance of 350 feet, so it's well in excess of what is needed. And we looked at the slope here, this is coming down from the main entrance, down toward the service entrance, and actually, the, the grade drops and then starts rising slightly. And at that intersection, we calculated a stopping sight distance for this vehicle of 225 feet, and we noted that with some clearing of brush, small saplings only, adjacent to the fence line, which is currently running along here, and the removal of three spruce trees, we could, we could accomplish, meet the requirement of 225 feet of stopping sight distance at this location.
And again, that's your property or town easement, right?
Yes.
So we don't have a problem, problems with the property.
One spruce tree's in very poor shape, one is actually growing right up into the overhead wires, and the rest are just saplings and small vegetation. The trees that are presently here do not impact the stopping sight distance significantly at all, and they would actually remain.
So if...
So it'd just be saplings that, that block the view.
So if that's the case, and you clear, and it only takes saplings to obstruct that view again, there needs to be a frequent maintenance of that.
Correct. And actually, we did incorporate in our maintenance protocols that were in the SWIP, we did include a section on the maintenance of this vegetation here, and this vegetation here, we discussed it at our meeting, and, but I'll highlight it.
I would recommend it's a separate standalone.
Okay, that's fine.
It's what?
A separate standalone, I wouldn't intermix it with the stormwater.
And we've done that in the past, we have sightline...
We have sight easements agreements, we have samples, we can give them, we've used them in subdivisions numerous times.
Well, and to the extent that it's on their property, not just what you've designated here, but on all sides, just to main, I mean, the requirement should be that you have to maintain those, those sight easements, those sightlines. It's your property, so it's easy to do.
As they show.
That's right, if you can provide us with that example, that you...
We have samples.
That'd be very good.
Jennifer, you have them, if you don't, I'll send it to them.
And the rest of the, I know that you had comments as well on this, but most of them were comments that were, are fine, there's just some technical issues that we would, would be addressing. One of the comments you did have regarding the under-drain pipe on the other side of the loop road.
I kind of know why you can't put it there, after looking at the profiles, because of the impacts and interference with the other piping.
Right, and also, I think it also helps provide for some of the hydrologic support for the tree that's in the loop island, and so I'd rather not have it, I don't know what Steve feels about it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we're just showing it on the lower side.
It's going to catch in the lower one anyway.
That's fine.
Right. And, and the other point, of course, the plan changes, was that we made the, the volume captured by the subsurface chambers larger in size to accommodate the larger water quality volume as recommended by the town engineer, so that was done as well.
Well, sounds, sounds great. I, I have a comment for Steve and for you folks all site. In recent history, looking through what applicants have done to improve or the, the environmental features of the, of a site, I, I think this is one of the best that I've seen in recent history, is to, you know, with the corlogs, innovation, good thinking, everybody collaborating, so I commend you all, staff from town, and, and you folks from the applicant, I think you did a great job.
You know, can I follow up on that for a second? Can you go back to the site plan for a second?
Sheet three, Ward.
It could be any, any one of these drawings. So, when I, when I first went to architecture school, there was this imperative to treat the working drawing like a work of art. It's something that needs to be, should be composed properly, clearly, elegantly.
Organized.
Organized properly. Your drawings are absolutely beautiful, and we used to do them by hand, you know, and now, now you're doing them on the computer, and even more beautiful, there's, there's something about this sort of drawn line, which is special. But I want to commend you on your drawings, they are really, really beautiful, and they are so clear, that it makes us, it easy for us to understand, you know, what we're being shown.
You use the whole sheet.
It's very rare to see this kind of, this kind of quality.
There's no room on the canvas.
Yes.
Plus it makes it easier for us to review.
Inside the proposed building, there's room for notes. You can make like a, you know, like a book, and it opens up.
There's no room for any more trees, I'm sorry.
That's it.
So every sheet's like, it has the same qualities, I just want to commend you for that very much.
Very much, we appreciate that.
I had a question, I'm, unfortunately, Sabrina's not here, but maybe Bob can help us. I'm confused on the parking issue, and what we're supposed to be doing here. There's language in here that, or recommendations, that we make a recommendation to the town board, but yet, we have, perhaps, we have jurisdiction to adopt what we've suggested is what we need here for parking?
Well, Sabrina said they, they're doing a draft memo that's going to be from the planning board to the zoning board, and it's going to be in advance of the December 5th meeting.
Yeah.
Going to address the parking.
Yeah, but I was confused as to whether or not we had jurisdiction to make the determination that it's acceptable as proposed, or if it's something we have to propose to the town board, or...
So I think the question is where the recommendation goes, you have the recommendation authority under the existing law, under the existing law, it's the town board, where there's no specific parking requirement set forth for, for the category of use, you would make the recommendation to the town board, and the town board would add it to the code. It seems like kind of a cumbersome process to legislate every time there's a gap.
Something special at this, yeah.
Right. So instead, what I believe the local law that's being proposed in front of the town board says is that the planning, where there's no specific parking requirement allocated in the code, the planning board, the zoning board, whoever's the approval authority for the, the application, would be the one to determine what the appropriate parking level for that use is. Here, I think the applicant is proposing 80?
Eighty-eight, I think.
Eighty-eight spaces. So my recommendation would be, if you agree with that, the allocation of parking, make the recommendation to both the zoning board and the town board, the town board's legislation is not going to go through the process, let's say, there's a public hearing scheduled for November 21st, I don't know if it's going to get adopted that night or not, my recommendation is cover all your bases, make the recommendation to both boards.
Identical recommendation.
Is what you think the appropriate...
Okay.
...allocation is.
Okay, good.
We want to make a public hearing?
It is a public hearing, it's a continued public hearing.
I thought it was informal.
Maybe Bob can...
Isn't it?
For you, for you right now, it's informal.
Informal, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Another Sabrina question, if Bob's going to, Sabrina's bringing up the membership here, I just don't know how that applies.
History?
I can't help you on that, sorry. Well, we've done that, we've done that lots of times, actually, clubs and organizations, because it deals with parking.
Okay, so...
Incapacity.
But I don't think these guys were looking to increase membership.
No, I think they...
She's just documenting that...
I think they wanted on the plan.
Shut the doors.
So you guys are maxed out, that membership?
They have no intention to expand it, right?
Yeah, it's, we're maxed out in terms of, since 1928, we've always maintained the same...
500 people?
We have a cap, and most of those 500 are outside of a 90-mile radius, so, I mean, the intensity of the usage is at those two times a year that we've demonstrated and reported, so it's, the membership is basically worldwide.
Right.
Just curious.
We have a member who came up to support us from Washington today.
Okay.
He's probably over there.
Welcome.
I know we've had...
You can stay, you don't have to go back to the swamp if you don't want.
My wife might argue with that.
We, we did receive a note, and I guess there was some information in Sabrina's memo, she made reference to it, but we don't have jurisdiction over firearms and shooting hours, and all that sort of thing, so it's not before us. So for the record, we can't respond to these, these notes that we've had, that we've received. So maybe that's before the zoning board, but it's not...
Is there been notes?
Yeah, we got an email from someone...
Emails from citizens.
Citizens.
Yeah, we're unaware of that.
You can have it.
It might very well be, as, as you've mentioned before, that's your neighboring club.
It's, it's an email from this Nichols family that's Barcliff Manor, it's not even in this town, and it's a different gun club.
Yeah, right.
You know, we can address, if there's a...
We don't have...
I'd like to have somebody address it more than prepare it.
We don't have to, we don't have to hear it, it's, it's not within our jurisdiction, right, right.
However, if you can easily address it, and it doesn't take any time, then when you submit other documents, you can just say what you just said, that you, to the best of your knowledge, you don't believe...
All the, their times...
It's okay.
Don't, don't reflect our operation at all.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Have you, so have you seen this, though, you, did you guys get a copy of it?
We actually did.
Okay.
You said notes, I thought there was something, that's...
Well, Sabrina made mention in her, her comments about complaints, I guess there have been some complaints of police.
There's a singular from Barcliff Manor, we, there's a note, there's a note in her comments that basically says that 10 years there have been...
Nine complaints or something?
Complaints, and only one of them was, and that was from Austin.
Right.
Great hearing.
Pretty good for...
Great hearing.
Right, okay.
And I'm assuming people really aren't using automatic weapons, right? Whatever.
Did I do that note?
Yeah, whatever.
I don't want to say it's fake news, but I think it might be fake news.
Well, okay.
Yeah, it's not us, yeah.
Okay.
So we need to schedule a public hearing then, at this point? Or, or do we do a public, or should we just make the recommendation at this point to the ZBA? What are we doing? And then there was the thought of doing a joint hearing.
Yeah, so, earlier this week, yeah, so what's before you right now is the environmental applications, and also the referral from the zoning board on the special permit, so you would need to make your recommendation back to the zoning board on the special permit, and to move forward with applications in your jurisdiction, schedule a public hearing. There was some talk about having a joint meeting where the public hearing on the special permit, and the public hearing on the environmental permits would occur simultaneously with both boards. We had a staff-level conversation about that earlier this week, and the thought was that it may only save a couple weeks, and it would require your board to attend three meetings a month, instead of two meetings in a month, and I'm not sure how you feel about that.
Have done it, so...
So, to save a couple weeks, right, so it's something for you to discuss, you know.
Well, the only issue, though, is that, in theory, it could only be one cycle, but by the same token, if something comes up, then it changes it, and the ZBA only meets once a month, and it, it could actually go six weeks or eight weeks. Just a thought, I mean...
I, I'm in favor of it, I mean, I think that, you know, the, all the hard work here, we should, there should be a reward, you know, like, we'll do another, another meeting just to sort of make this move along. So I could see doing one additional meeting if that, if that helps.
I don't know how we noticed that, at this point, because it's not been coordinated with ZBA yet.
Right, so the other thought is, so for your referral back to the zoning board, Bob, did Sabrina make any mention of what staff's plan is as far as a memo?
Uh, yes.
Because we can do...
I wrote it down, I was, that's what I was starting to say before, she said there's a draft memo that they're going to, she's going to circulate in advance of the December 5th meeting.
Okay.
Which is going to address all the parking, sightlines, wetlands, trees, and stormwater.
So at the December 5th meeting, you would have a draft of your referral recommendations to the zoning board at that point, we could schedule a public hearing, and allow time to coordinate with the zoning board.
And maybe do their, they meet, what, at the end of the month?
They meet, right, at the end of the month.
Or Thursday, maybe we can schedule for that.
So maybe at the second December meeting, we would be able to convene.
That sounds like a plan.
We can get you done in 2017.
That would be...
Be your Christmas present.
More than a Christmas present, believe me. You all know that we've been here for a little bit over a year now, and I'm pointing at you, I think it's been a long process, a hard process, and we've lost a lot of momentum, so it would be a wonderful thing to go into the new year and get this thing going.
Yep.
Okay, I'm in favor of that.
I've got a question, when, we've been adjourning going back to the ZBA, because it was, we needed to get to a point that this board was comfortable, would it make sense for us to go to the ZBA at the end of this month to tell them where we are in advance of this upcoming public hearing?
Yeah, I think so. And that might set the stage for the coordinated meeting.
Yeah.
You should probably talk to Sabrina and staff about that, yeah, that might be a good idea.
And informally, I spoke to some of the ZBA members the other evening, we had a dinner for volunteers, and they're asking why we were suggesting this, and I thought it was, I told them, it was just to expedite this, and if we could get all the questions answered one night, and, you know, things come up, but really get it, you know, resolved in, in one meeting, would, would help you guys, obviously.
Tremendous. Do we need to reappear before the ERB?
I don't, I don't think so, the board was pretty comfortable with the latest revised plans.
Steve, was there anything that you wanted to add, that you wanted to emphasize from your memo, we have it, but...
No, I think, you know, just follow up things with doing the cost estimates and other details that can come, you know, after.
Fine.
I have to leave, so...
Yep, so why don't we...
Can you get mine?
Yes, I can.
What are we doing, we're going to...
So if there are any...
Have the memo ready for December 5?
For the December 5th meeting. If there is anything specific that you want included in that memo, I guess let us know